Well, welcome everyone. We certainly appreciate you joining us today for the September 30th meeting, the 116th meeting of the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission. We appreciate you joining us for the important work we have to move through here over the next day and a half. As we begin our meetings, I always like to take a minute to reflect on why it is we come together regularly to do this work. And that is to do our best to support the mission of the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. And DEQ's mission is to be a leader in restoring, maintaining and enhancing the quality of Oregon's air, land and water. So for the next day and a half, we are going to do what we can to support that mission. Also a note as we get underway, you may know that we have three commissioners present at this time. Dear Commissioner Wade Mosby, who has been such a fantastic contributor to this commission, has completed his service on the commission and is enjoying his retirement with his family well deserved. We will miss him very, very much. And I will always miss his insightfulness, his encyclopedic absorption of all of the materials provided to us, no matter how many pages that was, and his great sense of humor and insight into so many of the issues that we deal with here. So that does mean however, that things run a little bit differently than normal. Like most bodies, normally the chair does not vote, only in the event of a tie to break the tie. But with only three commissioners, we do need a majority of affirmative votes to take official action. So you will hear me, the chair, voting on all of our actions as we move through our agenda. But considering we have three sitting commission members at this time, we are all present. And for what we are today, we have a full house. So we will note for the record that all commissioners currently serving are present. Commissioners and director, do we at this time see any need to amend our agenda? All right, hearing none, I'll also just share a reminder that on occasion, we reserve the right to slightly adjust our agenda if that, you know, just meets the needs of the group as it comes up. However, we do always try to keep pretty close to the timeframes that were anticipated when we go to public comment period because we know we want to be conscientious of people's time when they call in to participate remotely. So let's get underway. Our first action item today is the review and approval of our draft meeting minutes. And this is from the July 22nd, 23, 2021 regular EQC meeting. Commissioners, if you've had the opportunity to review the minutes, do we see the need for any amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
Second. And it'll probably rather anticlimactic how the two of you choose to handle the first and seconds. But I'm going to go ahead and leave that to you to divvy that up as you see fit. Having a first and second, do we have any opposition to approving the minutes? Hearing none, we will consider the minutes approved for the record. Thank you. All right, our action item B is our water quality permit fees. And we already have Justin and Jeff joining us to give this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso, Commissioner Kyle. My name is Justin Green, Water Quality Administrator for DEQ. I'm here to introduce our program's presentation of Agenda Item B, which seeks your approval to increase water quality permitting fees by 3% in 2021 for fiscal year 2022. This includes fees for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System and Water Pollution Control Facility permits. The work of our permitting program depends on these fees and plays a pivotal role in the protection and restoration of Oregon's rivers, lakes, streams, oceans, estuaries and groundwater. These permits are critical to keeping these waters safe for a multitude of beneficial uses, such as drinking water, fish habitat, recreation and irrigation. Established under Oregon Revised Statute 416.05, the legislature has authorized annual water quality permit fee increases of 3%. A proposed fee increase is needed to help account for the increase in costs to maintain current staffing levels and administer the permitting program for the coming year. Based on agreement established with stakeholders several years ago, these water quality permitting fees are intended to support 60% of our wastewater permitting program budget. Remaining 40% of the permitting program budget is supported by public funds, which include general fund, lottery fund and federal funds. The proposed rulemaking also includes some minor housekeeping amendments to clarify rule language and fee tables. This presentation will further summarize the basis of the fee increase proposal and our rulemaking effort, including an overview of water quality permit types and categories, details of the program's budget and the protected costs to maintain current service levels during the 21 to 23 biennium, and an overview of the proposed changes. And at this point, I'd like to turn over the bulk of the presentation to Jeff Rabinewitz, our permitting and program development manager. Both Jeff and I are available to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Justin, Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso, Commissioner Kyle, Jeff Rabinewitz, Water Quality Permit Program Development Manager with DEQ. Also, I just want to check since we had an issue last time, no problem hearing me?
No problem at all.
I'm glad that's working this time. Okay, if we can go to the next slide, please Stephanie. Just going to kind of walk through an overview and sort of highlight where the money actually goes to in running the permitting program. So if you would, just kind of jump into that. So with the water quality permitting, we break the permit into two main categories. Those are individual permits and then general permits, which will cover a group of like type of activities. And within that, we have the NPDS, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Those are the federal permits and the WPCF, Water Pollution Control Facilities. Those are generally thought of as the state permits. Under the main permit categories, we have the permitted type. So that will be domestic wastewater, both for NPDS and WPCF, the domestic onsite septic program, that's just WPCF, the industrial wastewater also for both, and then stormwater also. So we can go to the next slide, please. All right, so what this slide is showing is an overview of the NPDS permits, which programs they're at and their approximate percentage of raw permit numbers that they comprise. So you can see we have just under 3,000 total NPDS permits, with almost three quarters of those being within the general, a general permit for industrial and construction stormwater. I won't go through all the bits of this, but the next large chunk will be general industrial wastewater. And then it gets down into the individual permits for wastewater and the MS4 stormwater program. The next slide, we can go to the next slide, please, shows a similar picture. This is for the WPCF permits. Again, there's about 1,600 of these. You can see that these are mainly on the individual domestic onsite septic and general industrial wastewater comprise the bulk of these permits. And we can go to the next slide, please. All right, so kind of moving away from the program aspect of where the bulk of our work is and then to the budget itself. This is a side by side comparison from the last biennium to the most recently adopted biennium, so the 2021 through 2023. As you can see, the program cost covered by fees has gone up a little bit by about $2 million. So there's now about just over 17 and a half million program costs that are supported by general and lottery funds. 11 million federal funding is about 1.5. That is a slight decrease. So overall, the program costs have gone up just about $3.5 million. And to bring this back to something that Justin said, that we, you know, with the stakeholders, we try to have a 40% mark for what is paid for by fees where, I'm sorry, 60%, we are just under that 60% mark. Next slide, please. All right, so where does the actual budget go to? With the vast majority, it will go to personnel services, salaries, benefits, first contribution. Next major amount will go towards services and supplies, rent, general fund, attorney general fees, things like that. Capital outlet will be some technical equipment, DEQ laboratory type equipment. That's not a very large chunk of our budget. Special payment of 121,000 or approximately that goes to funding of a Oregon state law enforcement for one position. And then the indirect costs, those basically comprise a lot of the supporting aspects of the EQ, central services and things like that. So we can go to the next slide. All right, so this is a breakdown of the overall programming staffing cost on a FTE per year basis. So for the last biennium, the estimated cost, not estimate the actual cost, was just under $163,000 per FTE. It is projected to be about $179,000 per FTE per year for this biennium. That's an increase of about 4.98%. And the next slide we can go to, this will start to actually cover what the proposed changes are or updates. As Justin said, we are requesting a 3% just about across the board fee increase. The two things that are not included in this 3% are the rule statutory fees for our 700 J plaster mining general permit. Those are are in statute and the UIC fees are also not going to be increased by 3% for this. Everything else will be 3%. We also have some rule language clarification and just some fee table clarifications. Again, that's housekeeping. There actually are no, it doesn't, it's not going to equate into kind of into any type of fee increase or policy change or anything like that is just to better enumerate things. And we'll cover those briefly in the next two slides. We can move to the next slide, please.
Just a moment, Vice Chair Barasso.
Thank you, Chair George. Chip, I just had a question. If you scroll back a couple slide, a couple slides to the FT. Yeah, to this one, exactly. Just so I get a sense for, does this, I'm assuming this rate does not include overhead? That this is just all in FTE cost? I want to confirm that. And then maybe I'll just ask that question first.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know if I have that answer for you. So I'd like to be able to get back to you hopefully very quickly on that. But I'm not sure if that does include the overall overhead as far as departmental costs, I presume is what you're asking. So direct and supporting. I, we can certainly get back to you very quickly on that.
Okay, because I just, I guess this is just broader question of over time. I know that we, I at least understand that we have an older, we have an older sort of staff, that many staff that are nearing retirement age. And I just wonder how this is going to shift over time as there is just that, that changeover. And just as I look at this, because that detail would be helpful. But this certainly signifies that we've got, we've got folks that have been around for a long time. Just both good and something we need to be aware of and how it plays into this too.
Again, I think that's an excellent question, Vice Chair Barasso. I don't know if I have the, I don't think we've done a specific analysis for that. But certainly as our retirements and people that have been here for a while, generally when a new, when a new staff is brought in, they're going to be brought in at a lower step rate. So that will have a positive effect on the budget. But I don't think at this point, we have any direct projection as to how many staff are going to be retiring at what point, so.
Deputy Director Felden.
Thank you, Chair George and Vice Chair Barasso. Yeah, I can clarify, this is the cost to the agency for the position. So it would include what's considered personal services and supplies. So that's part of this. This is the cost versus a salary to an employee. And typically what they will do in costing out the FTE is they go at like a middle step in terms of the salary range to estimate what those costs would be. So this is the full cost to the department.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will jump back into what the proposed changes are. So as we talked about, there'll be some clarification. First one, make sure I'm on the right slide here. Is on the 700 PM plaster mining, in stream plaster mining general permit. What we are doing there is just adding, just making sure that it's clear as to which of the different types of permit fees are non-refundable unless the permit cannot be assigned. It's the same approach and policies implementation that we've had throughout this permit. Just wanted, we're just putting that into rule to include the new permit application, annual fee and renewal fees. Next slide, please. We are making two changes or updates, clarifications to our fee tables beyond the 3%. The clarification first is going to be around the environmental plan review fees. We're just putting a footnote that basically says that those include bio solids management plan and recycled water plant fees. They always have and we've been implementing those. This just again clarifies that. And then in Table 70G, we are clearly enumerating that the, what the cost of the 2000J, that's the drainage district, I'm sorry, drainage canal general permit. And the 2300A, that's the pesticide general permit. Those, the fees are going to be exactly the same. We have a catchall type of general permit fee already. And that's what those are being currently charged under. The fee will be the exact same, but we're just making it a line item. And then also for the 700 plaster mining, we're just making it clear that a renewal fee is due every five years as well. And we can go to the next slide, please. And at this point, we're ready to recommend the action item. If I can go into that unless there's any other questions.
Do we have any other questions or comments now? Commissioner Kyle.
Yeah, thanks, Justin and Jeff. And I agree that it's important to have a well functioning and efficient water permitting program in order to maintain and restore the water quality in this state. And in the last couple of years, we have really kind of emphasized and between the commission and then also the legislature have really increased the resources available to this program to improve its services. So my question is actually in the staff report, there is a brief mention of the ways the department is trying to reduce the program cost of this since increasing permit fees is one mechanism, but reducing costs is another mechanism in order to try to balance the budget. So the question is, could you elaborate on the ways that the program is trying to actually reduce program costs? It's only got a brief mention in the staff report.
Sure, I can, thank you for that question, Commissioner Kyle. I can kind of go over a brief aspect of that. So with the reduction on the permitting specifically, the idea that reduce cost would be kind of easier to think of on a permit, on a per permit basis. Obviously, we have to get the backlog of the permits addressed and want to get that into a normal five year cycle for reissuance on the NPDS permits, for instance. So some of the things that we have taken on within the permitting program would involve a lot of efficiencies on the process, internal QA type efficiencies, the utilization of subject matter experts, standardization of some of our other policies and updating of some of those other policies, as well as better tracking tools for how we are doing on the individual processes to make sure that we can identify the next thing that we can improve. So all of those have allowed us to become much more efficient over the last few years on a, on a per permit basis. So that is helping us be more productive at the same budget level.
Thank you. And then I guess a bit of a follow up question that is related to this topic item, but wasn't covered specifically in this report, was how the water quality permit program has been catching up on its backlog and whether we're starting to see the benefit of these efficiencies in processing permits more, more quickly. I guess that's more of a question for Justin perhaps.
Chair George, Commissioner Kyle, thank you. I'll actually will defer to Jeff. A lot of the credit going on in the permit program, the improvements and great progress we've made in addressing the backlog is credited to him and his staff. So I would like to give him the opportunity to pat himself and his staff on the back for the great work that they're doing. Especially relevant as we, as today is the last day of the federal fiscal year, which is a time period within which we are tracking our permit numbers. So we'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Commissioners. So to answer this question, I'll start off with this is a general, things are going well, our backlog. And I haven't gotten the most up to date numbers for this week. This is the end of the federal fiscal year, as Justin said. And I believe we've actually issued six permits this week to try to get those out within the federal fiscal year, which we did. So we're very happy about that. The approximate, and it's probably going to be off maybe by about a percent or two, is the backlog is down to about 68% now. And that goes back to where it was a few, probably about four or five years ago, when it was up to about 86%. So we've had a pretty good steady decrease in what that backlog is. What we are also focusing on is balancing with the permits that are expiring every five years, not letting those add back into the backlog. So we're kind of splitting our effort on keeping the ones that are coming off that five year mark and getting those renewed as close to renewal as, without having to be administratively continued as possible, while continuing to work on the backlog. With reference to the settlement agreement that we had from a few years ago with the court phase on that, at this point in time, I believe, and I apologize for not having the number exactly I thought I had, but we're supposed to be, I think, by some point next year at about 25% of the settlement agreement down that backlog. And we are right now probably at about 35%. So we are far ahead by about 10% above where we're supposed to be at this point next year. So we're very happy with that increase. We still have more to go and this year, just to kind of tap the team's efforts, and this includes stormwater, which is included in that backlog, cleaning up some of the ones that had to move from individual to general permit coverage over the years. But we had a very, very positive year. I think, give or take one, I believe our total permit actions for this year were 58, which is last year we had 44 permit actions. The year before that, I believe we were in the low 30s. So we are seeing a very, very steady increase. And that's without the increase on the last biennium new positions that we were committed to get, which are just being hired now. We will be starting within the next four to five weeks.
Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate that update.
Thank you. So with that, I can go to the action item if you like.
Yes, let's do that.
All right, with that, DEQ recommends the commission approve the proposed water quality fee increase rule amendments and accompanying fee tables as seen in Attachment A of the staff report for this item as part of Chapter 340 of the Oregon Administrative Rules, Divisions 45 and 71.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move that the commission adopt the proposed rule amendments and accompanying fee tables in Attachment A as part of Chapter 340 of the Oregon Administrative Rules, Divisions 45 and 71.
Do you have a second?
This is Commissioner Kyle. I second it.
Do we require any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks very much for your work on this and for your report.
Thank you for your support.
All right, so we are now ready for our update on water quality standards triennial review report and work plan. And so for this agenda item, we will have Jennifer and Connie and Deborah. Welcome, everyone.
Oh, Chair George, I'm just gonna, looks like we, I see, I'm looking at all my boxes. Looks like we've got both Connie and Deborah. Okay, great. All right, so good afternoon, Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso and Commissioner Kyle. My name is Jennifer Weigel and I'm the Deputy Water Quality Administrator here at DEQ. So I'm just going to kick off our presentation this afternoon, which is giving, oh, pardon me. I'm going to back up a moment because I would also like to make sure I introduce both Connie Dow, who will also be presenting this afternoon. She's the manager of our Water Quality Standards and Assessments section, and Deborah Sturdivant, who's our Water Quality Standards Program Lead. They're going to be doing the bulk of the talking this afternoon and I will turn it over to them in just a moment. But before I start, just to let you know what we're going to be doing today is giving you an overview of the 2021 Water Quality Standards Triennial Review that DEQ completed in July. So this is an information item for you only and no EQC action is needed on your part today. And so we're going to provide a background for you on both water quality standards generally and also the triennial review, which will include walking through the process that DEQ used for the 2021 triennial review and provide a summary of the projects that were a product of those discussions and outreach that are included in the 2021, 2020 through 2024 triennial review work plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Connie to kick us off with some background on what, what the triennial review is and why we do it.
Thanks, Jennifer. Next slide, please. Thanks, Commissioners. My name is Connie Dow, Water Quality Program Manager. I would like to start with the Clean Water Act requirements. So the Federal Clean Water Act requires the state hold a public hearings and update their water quality standards at least once every three years. So this is called Water Quality Standard Triennial Review. So triennial review in itself is not a water quality standard change. Rather, it's a planning process to seek public input and develop priority water quality projects to address in the next three years. Next slide, please. So water quality standards include three main components. Designated beneficial uses of a water body, the criteria to protect designated uses and anti degradation requirements. Designated beneficial uses of a water body include fishing that protects for the consumption of fish, drinking water uses, water contact or recreation and other uses. And also criteria are used to protect designated uses. For example, we have a temperature criteria of 16 degrees, which is a numerical criterion. And then we also have narrative standard or narrative criteria are statements of desired conditions such as a free from toxic effect. And then anti degradation policy is the third component, which says requirements and the procedures to protect water quality that has been achieved over time and to only allow lowering of that water quality once certain demonstrations are made. Next slide, please. Water quality standards are the foundation for different water quality protection programs. You can see from this slide, standards are used to establish wastewater permit limits and to control the discharge of pollutants into waters of the state. Standards are also used to assess whether waters are supporting uses or they are impaired. So if waters are identified as impaired when they don't achieve the water quality standards. Also, water quality standards are the basis for the TMDL development and for water quality certification of federal permits and also for one licenses. So as you can see from this slide, water quality standards set the foundation for many other water quality programs. Standards serve as the basis for assessment and the integrated report, which you will hear later. So it's important to have water quality standards up to date. Next slide, please. There are a number of reasons DEQ wants to review and revise a water quality standard. Their reasons include incorporating new scientific information, meeting federal requirements, making standard more clear, and also developing implementation procedures for narrative standard so that they can be implemented consistently across our water quality programs. Now I would turn over to Deborah to discuss the details of the twenty twenty one Water Quality Standard Triennial Review process.
Thank you. Next slide, please. The Chair George and Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Deborah Sturdivant, and I will present the process we used for the twenty twenty one triennial review and the summary of the projects included in the work plan that resulted from that review. So the major steps of the review process are shown on this timeline slide. In January, the standards program developed a comprehensive list of work needs and gave each a draft priority rating. Then we asked internal for internal review and had discussions with staff from all of the different water quality programs at DEQ. After making some revisions based on that internal discussion, we posted a draft of the project descriptions and priorities for public comment here in April and had a forty five day comment period during which time we held an informational meeting and a public hearing. Then considering that public comment, we developed the triennial review report and work plan, which includes an estimated schedule of projects to complete or initiate over the next three years, given the staff resource available. So we provided the report and work plan to EPA in July and posted it on our website. And today, the last step in this process is to present this information to the commission. Next slide. DEQ qualitatively rated each identified project as high, medium, or low priority for work over the next three years. The priority ratings were established by reviewing what we termed the value, urgency, level of effort, and risk to project success for each project. Value we defined as either an environmental value such as the water quality benefit or human health benefit that would result, or an administrative value such as improved efficiency or consistency, say perhaps in the permitting program, as the standards are being implemented. Urgency was rated by considering extraneous, such as a court order or EPA disapproval action. Fortunately, in this triennial review, unlike several in the past, we did not have these kind of external requirements that we had to respond to. But for urgency, we also considered whether DEQ's program works, such as issuing permits or TMDLs is being impeded, or whether the work was already in progress. And the level of effort was rated by looking at the scope of the project, the staff resources required to complete it, whether there is guidance or precedence available on the topic. And risk to project success, we considered things like the level of experience that we have or EPA has on that particular issue, the availability of data and information, potential level of controversy, and whether multiple federal approvals would be needed. Next slide, please, Stephanie. So I was going to just pause here and see if there were any questions on any of the background information presented so far by either Connie or myself, and then I'll get into the actual projects that were included in the work plan and give you a brief description of those.
Any comments or questions at this point? Doesn't look like it, Deborah. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Next slide. So using the criteria just described, nine projects were rated as high priority, and four of these are already in progress, five are new. So I'll briefly describe each one. For the most part, the public comment we received supported our group of high priority projects, or at least most of them, as being a high priority and agreed that they would have environmental or administrative value. So the first set of projects are the fish and aquatic life use updates that are currently underway. This is a rulemaking project to correct, clarify, and update Oregon's aquatic life uses for the temperature and dissolved oxygen standards based on new data. Our current uses were adopted back in two thousand and three. So aquatic life uses include different species and life stages that occur in Oregon waters and have different water quality needs or tolerances. For example, salmon and trout rearing, salmon and steelhead spawning, core cold water habitat, and cool water species are all subcategories of aquatic use used in the temperature standard. Ensuring that the aquatic life use designations are accurate and up to date ensures that the water quality goal for the water body is appropriate and that DEQ will apply the correct water quality criteria to that water body. This project is currently in the technical research and development phase. We plan to begin a stakeholder process advisory committee this fall and bring the proposed rule amendments to the EQC in November of next year. Next slide, Stephanie. Okay, two, two other high priority projects are also currently underway, and they relate to variances. Variances are a tool available under the Clean Water Act that applies only for discharge permits, NPDES permits, and four one certifications. Variances establish an alternate criteria that applies for a defined limited period of time when the underlying standard is not feasibly attainable. During the variance term, the facility must implement pollution reduction measures in order to make progress toward achieving the standard. DEQ is currently working on updating our procedures for evaluating granting variances and is also preparing to respond to expected variance requests. An example of a request that we expect would be for water temperature. Some municipal treatment plans that use an activated digestion treatment system cannot meet the temperature criterion without adding post treatment cooling technology, which may have environmental impacts. In some cases, the benefit to the river from the cooling technology may be negligible, and a variance could be an appropriate limited, provide limited time to come up with a better solution. During the variance term, the facility would continue to make progress on reducing stream temperature to the extent feasible. So two of the new high, new high priority projects are related to water quality standards for toxic substances. The first is a rulemaking to update Oregon's aquatic life criteria to include new and updated recommendations published by EPA. We last updated kind of comprehensively our aquatic life toxins criteria in two thousand and four. In addition, DEQ will consider adopting the aluminum and acute cadmium criteria that have been federally promulgated into our state standards. This project will bring Oregon's aquatic life criteria up to date with EPA's latest recommendations. It has high environmental value because the new criteria will help DEQ limit or prevent the discharge of these pollutants to Oregon waters. The second project would review and update our procedures to apply Oregon's narrative criterion. The result would be the ability to regulate toxic pollutants of concerns that do not yet have Clean Water Act numeric criteria. In addition to the water quality value, this project will also assist the permitting process by providing clear procedures. Next slide. So in addition to the narrative toxins criteria, the next few projects I'm going to talk about are also about developing or updating procedures to implement a narrative rather than a rulemaking to adopt a numeric criteria. The bio criteria project would review and update the procedures DEQ uses to interpret and apply the narrative bio criterion. The bio criterion says that water quality impacts should not cause detrimental changes to resident biological communities. Today, our application procedures have focused on using macra and vertebrate data and models to compare what species are present at a test site with those we would expect if the water body was in good condition. But additional metrics have continued to be developed by the scientific community. And this review, and one of our staff at DEQ in the lab has participated on national groups that have been working on this issue. So this review will consider whether additional methods would help DEQ better evaluate whether the biological community in a water body is being supported or impacted and possibly improve methods to identify the stressors causing any impact. Next slide. So this project would consider a phased integrated approach for addressing excessive aquatic plant and algal growth or over enrichment, which we call a eutrophication. The objective is to develop clear and consistent procedures to apply the narrative criterion together with numeric values for chlorophyll A, pH, and dissolved oxygen, which can also be associated with excessive algal growth in order to provide targeted control of nutrient loading where it is degrading water quality. This project would have high environmental value for water bodies being impacted by excessive nutrients and high administrative value by providing clear procedures. Next slide. And finally, the sedimentation project would build on current knowledge and experience to identify the methods and procedures DEQ will use to apply the narrative criterion pertaining to suspended embedded sediment. There are a number of methods and metrics that have been developed and are in use by hydrologists. Having clear and consistent procedures will improve DEQ's ability to identify and prevent or remedy the impacts of sediment on threatened and endangered salmon and steelhead and other native biota and to protect healthy functioning streams. Next slide. So those were the nine we identified as high. We decided to include in our three year work plan in addition several projects in response to public comment that we received. These include some work on ocean acidification and dissolved oxygen, working with the assessment program to help with their methodology for assessing ocean conditions. In addition, we included revising the pH criterion for the Crooked River, which will establish an appropriate criteria for this sub basin, given its geologic conditions, because it's a good time that the TMDL for the Crooked River is coming up on the schedule before too long, and it would be a good time to make that adjustment.
Whitman, did you have a question or comment? Okay, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's no problem. Okay, next slide. So in addition, we identified three projects that we would do if time allows. These include beginning to research the basis of EPA updates to the National Human Health criteria recommendations and how they compare to Oregon's current criteria, considering revisions to aquatic life use designations for constructed canals and ditches where there is supporting information that the current uses are incorrect, and then updating DEQ's anti degradation implementation procedures to reflect revised state and federal regulations and incorporate clarifications. Next slide. So I'll just summarize some of the public comment we heard quickly. We got comments from twenty two people or organizations. As I said, many of them supported our high priorities, or at least most of them, and did note that they would provide environmental or administrative value. There were some exceptions, and this is just a sampling. We did hear some comment that maybe we shouldn't spend time on variances, a commenter that felt like sedimentation should be a lower priority, concerns about ocean conditions, which is one of the reasons we added that, and an interest in having us correct uses for irrigation canals, that that should be a high priority. So next slide. This is, you can't see this, I'm sure, but this is just kind of roughly what if you look at all the projects identified and you try to lay them out over a three year schedule, what it would look like. The blue and yellow are just for visibility. There's no other meaning to that. And you can see that we identified on here several that would be as time allows. So this is an estimated schedule. It's pretty, I think it's pretty ambitious and optimistic. But in some projects will begin during this timeframe, but carry over as some of the ones we initiated last year are carrying over into this cycle. And, you know, it's always subject to change over this three year period if some other issue becomes a high priority. You, I'm sure you all remember, in the last three years, we ended up with a petition for ORW. That wasn't on our original, you know, schedule, but we needed to address that. So we incorporated that in. So two of these rulemaking, two of these projects are rulemaking that will come to the EQC for action. But on the others, DEQ will be happy to inform the commission when the projects are initiated or reach major milestones according to your interest. Next slide. So this just provides the webpage where all the materials can be found and my contact information and Kaylee Major on our staff who helped with this project, her contact information. Next slide. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We'll sing.
Sorry, Catherine, I muted you accidentally.
That's okay.
Yeah, I just kind of had a question, actually, regarding the narrative criteria for aquatic and algal growth and chlorophyll A. And it's kind of just a clarifying question perhaps, but I was curious if that is specific or can be specific towards harmful algal blooms and how the relationship is between that criteria and habs, which are on the increase.
That's an excellent question. This particular project, our view at this time was to focus on nutrient enrichment and nutrient loading. And for algal for algal growth or harmful algal growth, if that's the kind of algae that that result, which is pretty, you know, kind of site-specific, water body-specific. So it's not really specifically oriented towards harmful algal blooms, but by looking at how we need to control nutrients that could contribute to solutions in that area as well.
Yeah, and I can see the connection there with if reducing the drivers for algal blooms will benefit all types of halgal blooms, which is, which is really useful. I guess a follow-up question, is there kind of a clean water criteria for specifically for or is it always kind of combined into algal blooms and chlorophyll A and things like that?
Yeah, so EPA has published recommended values for some of the toxins that are generated by harmful algal blooms, microsystems, and I forget how to say the other one right now. It's been, it's been a while. And primarily, you know, and their, their recommendation was that states can either adopt those as criteria or as advisory levels. And it just so happens that the Oregon health advice, a health authority already uses those published values to issue habs advisories in Oregon. And DEQ lists waters that are that have habs advisories on our impaired water quality list. But we, so we didn't really feel like it was necessary to adopt them as regulatory water quality standards because those are not, you know, those are kind of a measure of whether that type of harmful algal bloom is in the water body, but they're not something that you would control. You know, it's not the pollutant that would be discharged that you could control. So I think we, we put that as a lower priority to think about adopting those as criteria because the system that's in place now will already identify, use those same values to identify the problem, get it on the 3OD list, and therefore trigger, you know, developing a plan that actually looks at what are the causes and contributors in that specific water body. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Vice Chair Brasso.
Just to make sure, I feel, I think we've, we've touched on some of this in terms of temperature variances. Which of these are any of these, which of these will come back to the commission?
Chair George and Commissioner Brasso, the two projects that will come back to the commission because they are rulemaking projects are the aquatic life use updates and the aquatic life toxics criteria. The the variances, with the way our rules have set up variances is if it's an individual variance for one specific facility, like one municipal treatment plant, the director can approve that. But if it's a multiple discharger variance, like we did for methyl mercury a couple of years ago, that would come to the commission and that would be adopted as a rule. So right now, I think we're kind of expecting that the first temperature variances that we get will more likely be for individual facilities and therefore wouldn't necessarily need EQC action.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the presentation? All right, I'm not seeing any. Thank you, everyone, for that presentation and we know that we will hear more about the triennial review.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are due to take a break. And it is going to be a long day, so taking some breaks and stretching is, is well advised. It's just after 1:30 now, so could we be back at just about 1:41? Does that work for everyone? Great, see you then.
And Chair George, this is Stephanie Caldera, your commission assistant. We will pause the recording while we are on break. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you. All right, we will get underway with our report on the Water Quality Integrated Report for 2022.
All right, good afternoon again, Chair George and Vice Chair Brasso and Commissioner Kyle. So my name again is Jennifer Weigel. I'm the Deputy Water Quality Administrator at DEQ. And with me for this presentation, I have Connie Dow, who's the manager of the Water Quality Standards and Assessment Section. And I also have Becky Anthony, who's the Water Quality Assessment Program Lead. So like the previous presentation, they will be doing the bulk of the presentation, but I'm going to just spend a couple of minutes teeing us up on this topic. So you heard a little bit in the previous presentation that Connie Endeavor Stewart gave that how water quality standards are used in various programs. And so this is the development of the Water Quality Integrated Report is one of those important programs that form the foundation and are the basis for a lot of the work that occurs in this part of our water quality program. So what, let's see, if I could have the next slide, Stephanie. Okay, so today, in addition to keeping you informed about our work in this area, we're also here to fulfill a specific statutory obligation that the Water Quality Integrated Program has to provide an informational overview of our draft assessment methodologies. And we're going to talk a little bit more about what those are in a moment. And the key, and also to highlight key issues for the commission and to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on those methodologies that we've developed. So as a result, our goal for this presentation here today is for you to have a better understanding of the methodologies that we are planning to use to assess the status of water quality in Oregon and also the methodology updates that we have prioritized and developed for use in the 2022 Integrated Report. So to that end, our presentation here today is first going to focus on talking a little bit about the Clean Water Act framework to identify where our integrated report fits into the DEQ, the broader DEQ water quality programs and processes. As part of that, we will provide a brief introduction also on the integrated report. We're going to spend the bulk of our time today talking about the methodology updates itself, since that is our focus here today because that's the part of the process that we are in at the moment. And those updates that we've performed since the last integrated report. And then finally, we will talk about the 2022 Integrated Report schedule and next steps. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Connie to talk a little bit more about the Clean Water Act framework and some of the background on the integrated report.
Thanks, Jennifer. Next slide, please. So thanks to commissioners. Again, my name is Connie Dow, Water Quality Program Manager. So this slide highlights DEQ's water quality program elements and how they work together. So starting from the left, we establish water quality standards to protect the beneficial uses of Oregon's waters. For example, we have temperature and E. coli standard to protect swimming uses and fish aquatic life use. We then compile data and information from water bodies in the state to understand whether these water quality standards are being met. As this blue box shows, two related requirements within the Clean Water Act govern the water quality assessment or the integrated report. One provision 305B requires states to report on the overall conditions of Oregon's waters, which is a 305B report. Another section 303D requires state to identify a list of waters that are impaired or not meeting water quality standards, which is called the 303D list. The combination of 305B report and the 303D list is called the integrate the report. So what for water bodies on the 303D list, which is the impaired waters list, we are required to develop TMDLs to meet the in-stream standards. Finally, we implement the TMDLs to attain water quality standard through point source controls and non-point source control and actually point source permitting and non-point source control. Next slide, please. You can see from this slide, there are two state and federal requirements for the integrated report. On the federal side, there are specific requirements for the final integrated report. All states, including Oregon, are required to assess state's water quality and submit the integrated report to EPA for approval every two years. And also seek public input on the integrate the report before submitting to EPA. There are also Oregon's specific requirements for the assessment methodology. Oregon statute requires a briefing to the commission on the draft methodology and it provides another opportunity for public comment on the methodology during the commission meeting. This is the focus of our discussion today. So now I will turn over to Becky to provide more details on the 2022 Assessment Methodology Update.
Thanks, Connie. Good afternoon, Chair George, commissioners. My name is Becky Anthony, and I'm the Water Quality Assessment Program Lead. Next slide, please. So today we're talking about the assessment methodology, but first I want to walk through our process for how we generate an integrated report. So there are five major steps in the process. However, these steps can be occurring at the same time. So our first step is that we make updates to our existing methodology or we develop new methodologies where none exist currently. So that's what we're here to talk about today. This compilation of methods is what we call our assessment methodology, and I'm going to go into more detail on that in the next slide. And so these methodologies are how the assessment team determines whether or not water bodies are meeting their criteria and supporting beneficial uses. So the second step in the process is to solicit data. So DEQ issues a data call for interested parties to submit data for assessment purposes. Our 2022 Integrated Report call was based on a five-year period of record, and it was held for 60 days from February 1st through April 2nd of this year. So the third step is where we're at now, is to complete our updates to our methodology and to assemble and evaluate the data we receive. So our methodology updates are completed before we start our data assessment. We assess the data against water quality criteria using our associated methodologies. And so as Connie noted earlier, we're required to provide an overview of the methodology updates that we completed for each cycle, provide a summary of the comments we receive and how we address them. And so that's what we're here today. So the next step then is to issue the draft for public comment. And then we'll return to the EQC to provide an informational overview on our draft findings. And the final step is to incorporate the comments that we receive and submit it to EPA for approval in April of 2022. Next slide, please. So what is the assessment methodology? So the assessment methodology are the criteria and the procedures for how the assessment program determines whether a water body is considered impaired. So we like to think of it like a cookbook. And the methodologies are the recipes that we use to determine whether or not a water body is impaired and whether it meets its beneficial uses. So water quality standards, as Deb spoke on earlier, are contained in state regulations after they've been adopted by the commission and are approved by EPA. These standards can be numeric or quantitative, like DO, temperature or bacteria, or they may be narrative or qualitative, like the bio criteria or our aquatic weeds analogy. And so our job in the assessment team is to determine how we conclude with the data we receive whether or not a water body meets these standards and supports its beneficial uses. So it's our job in the assessment program to determine what the minimum number of samples are in order to make a conclusion. What frequency of exceedance constitutes an impairment? And so those are the types of decisions that go into these methodology updates. And for new methods where there are different ways to assess the data, we have to undergo peer review to make sure that our methods are both scientifically and technically defensible. Okay, next slide, please. So for 2022, prior to starting our updates, we sought input both internally and externally on what methodologies we should update. And we came up with six priority updates for 2022. So the first update was a delisting method for dissolved oxygen using continuous dissolved oxygen data. So with new and improved methods for measuring continuous dissolved oxygen, we needed to incorporate that method into how we demonstrate that a stream is currently meeting the dissolved oxygen standard. So the second method is kind of similar. We needed an assessment method for using continuous pH data. We receive a lot of continuous data with, since it's easier to collect and not as expensive anymore. And so we needed to develop a method to assess this data. The third update was we developed a delisting method for freshwater fecal coliforms. So fecal coliforms has not been the freshwater indicator bacteria for almost 10 years now. However, we still have 303D impairments for freshwater fecal coliforms. So we needed a way to remove those old impairment listings and either replace them with E. coli or delist them. So our fourth update was we created a minimum data requirement for what constitutes attainment. In the last cycle, we really focused on what the minimum number of samples we would need to call something impaired. And so in this cycle, we needed to set the boundary for how many samples we needed to say something was attaining its criteria. So the fifth update, new aluminum criteria was promulgated earlier this year, and so we needed a method to assess it. And lastly, based on all the feedback we got from the 2022 Integrated Report, we determined that assessing watershed units by station would provide the level of detail needed. And I will talk more about that in the next few slides. So we offered many opportunities.
Okay.
For the, yeah.
I wanted to ask a question. Number one on this list, delisting for dissolved oxygen. Is it anticipated that we have, you know, a significant need or that there will be a desire to pursue delisting for DO in several waters?
Yeah, there actually is, and continuous dissolved oxygen provides a better representation of the Diel cycle, so we can show that it's actually meeting criteria.
Okay, thank you.
So we offered many opportunities for the public to comment on these updates. So first, we sought input on what methods we should prioritize. Second, we held three informational weaponers where we walked through all of the changes that we were proposing to make to the methods. Third, we offered an informal public comment period and sought comments on our proposed methodologies. And then we held a 45-day formal public comment period on the assessment methodology itself. And lastly, we're offering public comment opportunity following this presentation. So next slide. So next slide. So most of the key issues, uh, that were raised during our public comment period were not specific to the updates that we had done for 2022. They were kind of more broader issues. And so I'm going to talk a little about each one of these. So the three major areas of concern were our watershed assessment units, the designation of beneficial uses and where standards are applicable and what we consider to be readily available data. Next slide, please. So the first issue concerns DEQ's application of watershed assessment units. So I wanted to provide a refresher on what those are. So in 2020, DEQ switched to a higher resolution mapping tool and we created these assessment units which partitioned the state's water bodies into, um, the streams, rivers, lakes, estuaries into these units for reporting purposes. And these assessment units remain fixed over time. So we can track the water quality in them and see how water quality has changed. And so because of this higher resolution, Oregon would have over 2 million different units identified if we did each stream individually, which wasn't practical relative to the state's monitoring and assessment resources and the two-year reporting cycle. So we grouped the smaller streams and tributaries into what we call a watershed unit. So we used a method developed by the USGS and it's used universally and it's based on hydrology. And so in the previous cycle, we combined all of the data collected within that watershed unit and made a single assessment conclusion based on that pooled data. And so in this example, in this picture, the purple watershed area is an, is a watershed assessment unit. And on our mapping tool, it would be identified as impaired. And so in the previous cycle, data was aggregated from the different monitoring stations and we had a single conclusion. So this led to the concern that it appeared that all streams within that purple watershed were impaired, which was not what we were saying. So in response, we decided that we will assess each monitoring location individually. And so that at each, uh, the attainment status will be identified at each station. So for, in this example, the green triangle would represent that stream. And it would demonstrate that this stream was assessed as attaining its criteria. And the red triangle would show that at this particular monitoring location, it's impaired in this case for temperature. And so when you click on that station on our map, the pop-up box will display the monitoring location, the stream name, what parameters we assessed and whether or not they were assessed as attaining or whether or not they're considered impaired. So this provides a more localized impairment information for parties who are interested and it clarifies that not all of the streams within that watershed are considered impaired. And so ultimately, the assessment unit has a single conclusion. But you'll be able to access the assessment information for each location more readily and transparently. Next slide, please.
Vice Chair Barasso.
Thank you Chair George. Becky, I, I'm trying to understand in the last slide, I, I hear the change you're making in the resolution of data that people have. How is, how is that information used? Because now we've got unit, you know, data based on the watershed unit and then more refined data based on the stream. So just what, what does that, how, how does that change things other than having more information? How does that, how does that get taken into, uh, the, how does that play into three or three D listings and then whatnot?
Um, basically, so it provides more information specific to each stream individually. So before you weren't able to dissect which stream in the watershed was considered impaired because we pooled all of the data together and some may have been attaining and some didn't. And so in this case, now you'll be able to see exactly which stream is impaired. And, and so then you will be able to identify, um, so for example, if someone was, um, applying for a permit on a stream that was in this watershed unit and it's classified as impaired, they, before they had no way of showing that it wasn't the stream that they were planning to do work on was the one that was impaired. So this way you'll be able to see more clearly which, which streams are or are not impaired. Does that make sense?
It, it, it does, it does. I just, I guess my follow-up then to that is that does that change the way we're, does that change the way we are listing streams on the three, does that change the way we're listing things on a three or three D list?
No, it will not. Our, our methods will stay the same. It's just kind of a finer resolution in these watershed units where, where things were kind of grouped together before.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, um, my question, thank you, um, Vice Chair Barasso, my questions were kind of along the same lines, but let me just try to nail this down completely. And Becky, thank you. You're, you're doing a great job on this. But as, as you know, this issue was a, um, an important issue the last time around on this. And so I think just being very clear about what we are and are not changing is important for everybody. So my understanding, let, let me lay out what my understanding is. If you can tell me if I've got this wrong. We are not changing the watershed assessment units.
Correct.
Number one. Number two, when we talk about, um, how Oregon is doing in terms of meeting water quality standards, we talk about that in terms of assessment units. So is a general matter, for instance, in, um, I'll just take a basin, um, say the Grand Ron basin. We might say that X percentage of watershed assessment units are in compliance with the temperature standard. Okay, but then if somebody wants to drill down into one of those assessment units and say, well, yeah, this, this assessment unit is listed as impaired for temperature. But if you go and look at the actual data around individual monitoring stations, this stream is impaired or this monitoring state, the stream at this monitoring station is not meeting standards. But this other, this other stream, maybe it is. I think that's, is that all right? So for purposes of permitting a point source um, discharger and whether or not they need to meet, sorry to put you on the spot here.
Oh, no, no. I'm just trying to make sure I follow.
Okay, so if I'm a point source discharger and I'm trying to figure out if I need to meet water quality based F on, on that's for a pollutant on a stream that's impaired, that, that question about impairment is still at the watershed assessment skate unit scale? Or are we looking at individual monitoring stations to the extent we have those data?
I think we'd be looking at the individual stream monitoring stations. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I think that nails most of the questions we're likely to get. But for instance, if I'm doing a TMDL in that same basin or sub-basin, would, and you may not have an answer to this yet, but in terms of the TMDL in allocations, do you know if we would do, if the TMDL would include that stream where we've got a monitoring station that shows that actually for that monitoring station, it is in compliance with standards?
Right. That's, that's actually a really good question. And, um, EPA has been talking about this, um, at the national level as well. And I, I can't answer for TMDLs, but I think, um, it would probably depend on the pollutant, I would guess. And they, there's some, um, talk of developing, um, they call them protective TMDL. So if you did the whole watershed as a whole, it's more of a protective aspect as opposed to, um,
And, and Becky, I know there are also statistical methods for taking what specific, site-specific actual data we have and then applying those to a watershed assessment unit. So we don't probably need to get all the way into the weeds on this one. But for staff, I would ask you that we, we do develop a really clear communications around this, both from the point source discharger permittee point of view in for, in for the non-point source piece as well, the TMDL side. So that we're just really clear upfront how we're approaching this. And you, you don't need to do that today, but, um, for Jennifer, I guess in particular, I think that's really important for us to do, for, for everybody to just, for us to be transparent about this work.
Right. And, and Director Whitman, if I, if I may, I think one of the things that, that is helpful for us in this instance is that we do do TMDLs within a, um, on a watershed basis. So we're already looking, we're pulling in this data and information and to the degree it's relevant and appropriate, our allocations, uh, and analysis reflect relationships between upstream and downstream delivery of pollutant loads. So it's always been the case where you could have a stream that's maybe attaining, but still contributing somewhat of a load that still, you know, go, that gets factored in. So I think I don't, I don't foresee a circumstance where we need to change how we conduct our analysis or how we allocate our loads based on this parsing of, of monitoring data.
Yeah. Director Whitman, this is Connie. I want to add that, uh, TMDLs are usually done on a watershed scale, if you will, that's much larger scale than the, um, HAC 12 we're talking about here. That's the first point I want to make. Second point I want to make is Becky and the, um, IR team did, uh, produce a fact sheet and SOP document specifically discuss how we implement watershed units impairment, um, in permittee, permit, uh, permits and, um, other programs like a 401.
Okay, that, that sounds good. So look forward to seeing those and, and making sure that I understand this also, uh, because, but really thinking about it from a communications point of view, so that members of the public also are able to understand this fairly readily. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Chair Barasso.
Yeah, this is, there's a lot to this and I can appreciate there's a lot of different levels of detail. And I guess it's just, I agree Richard, that, that communication is going to be really important. And, and you know, as I, as I kind of stepping back and thinking about this, it's sort of just like, and I know I'm, this is too, this is not this simple, but it's where, where, how are we determining that impairment and making sure that we're not missing something by allowing, by, if, if the point of impairment is somewhere further, if somehow the basis of it is somewhere further down in the, in the watershed, it, it just needs to be that, it means, it, it, there needs to be sort of apples to apples in terms of the, the way that we're thinking through, uh, on this. And I, I want to make sure that we're, as, as we're getting more resolution, we're not necessarily letting activities happen on one particular stream that may be unimpaired in its own right, yet does, like you said, does contribute, you know, pollutant load downstream and, and that downstream point is maybe where we determine that impairment. So there's just, there, there needs to make, I just want to make sure we're not, in getting to this level of resolution that we're not, um, we're not missing, uh, we're not missing something there.
Director Whitman.
Yeah. You're muted, Richard.
You're muted.
Sorry about that, folks. Um, let me, let me try again. I think, um, I want to make sure that our communication materials and fact sheets have a kind of visual that describes this in a visual way also. And, and thinking about the point that Jennifer made and then Vice Chair Barasso just echoed, we may have, I'll try to talk through this, we may have a monitoring station that shows that a particular stream that it's meeting, I'm just going to use temperature for the moment. We could use other parameters, but if that monitoring station, the temperature standards being met. But that stream is tributary to another stream. And once you get downstream, we have another monitoring station that shows that at that point, the temperature standard is not met. So if we, you know, had a wastewater treatment plant, well, I'm not even going to go there. I just, thinking about all the iterations of this and what it means for a point source and for non-point source designated management agencies, uh, and doing that in a visual way, I think would be really helpful. And, and we, we may have to do it to some degree with some just, we're not going to do it for every pollutant, but, um, certainly temperature in particular, since it's a large proportion of the listings, I think we want to be very clear about. Okay. I've done enough.
All right.
All right, please continue.
All right. So the second issue revolved around where uses have been designated and what standards were, should be applicable to a particular water body. So currently the standards are applied to all waters of the state, which is a very broad definition in Oregon and it encompasses all of the water bodies that we receive data for and would assess. And so the uses that have been designated were assigned at a basin scale. And so we're required to assess those uses that have been designated. However, those uses may have been changed since they've been designated. So for example, a natural stream channel that may have been used for irrigation when uses were originally designated, it may have been piped to reduce water loss. And so is an aquatic life use or a recreation use appropriate there? And so this is one of the issues that came up. And so changing designated uses are outside the scope of the integrated report, but DEQ is working towards addressing this issue, um, through the triennial review process as Deb mentioned earlier.
So this is Kathleen and I have a question about that as well.
Yes.
In some bases, we actually have, um, well, so to start, start by saying, in many cases where there are, um, salmonid habitats, not always, but very often that will be a driving water quality standard for things like temperature or sedimentation. Where they're applicable, they're often some of the most sensitive uses. And again, it's certainly specific to the contaminant. There are some bases like the Umatilla River where salmonids were extirpated, uh, but then reintroduced and, um, a recovered population. So can uses be restored, um, in basins like that?
Um, you know, I, 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 I'm not sure I can answer that, but I, I, I want to say the use was never taken away. So we haven't, as to my knowledge, we've only downgraded several uses. And Jennifer, you may correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I, I, I believe only like once or twice. And so that use would still be there.
And it sounds like Jennifer's got.
Yeah.
Got her finger on this one, Jennifer.
Yes. Chair George, um, you know, the fish and aquatic life use protections have been broadly designated. And, and I, the real issue that I, as I understand, is it was raised and has been raised a number of times in the context of the integrated reporter, those instances where we, we may have constructed waterways in particular, where, um, when we broadly designated uses, we didn't go in with a fine tooth comb and say, oh, well, this is, you know, um, this, this is, this has never been fish habitat. This has been concrete lined. This doesn't, this doesn't, um, you know, it doesn't, it's never has and never will behave like a fish spawning location. Um, and so there have been concerns about, you know, data that may exist. Um, I, I would say we do not have great information on how frequently this occurs. Um, it is, I would say, you know, there are concerns that it could occur because of how, um, our uses have been designated and where water quality data may come in through this process. And that's why, you know, I think the, in the triennial review presentation you saw from Connie and Deb, um, and in the report, it adds some more definition. and in the report, it adds some more definition that we would look into, you know, under what circumstances would the fact set support and evaluation of these types of uses where there's been broad designations for cold water, you know, cold water species and protections where that's not, it, where the water body is such that we would not expect that to have occurred nor, and also, you know, the kinds of things we would also be looking at are, you know, is there a relationship between the water that comes from that particular, the water quality and needs to protect anything downstream as well? That would be an important consideration also. So there's, there's a, it started, there's a lot of layers to this one that would be looked into and would need to be looked into in a water quality standards review, but that's the nature of the general concern.
Okay. I think that's helpful. All right.
Thanks Chair George. Next slide, please. So the third major comment we received concerns the term readily available data and what constitutes readily available. So the term readily available is contained in Clean Water Act regulations that stipulate that states must identify impairment based on readily available data and information. So DEQ's definition of readily available data is found in our submission guidelines, which are posted on our website. And so we interpret this to include data that's stored in DEQ's Aquam's database, data that's submitted to us by third parties during our data call, and data that we can pull from publicly accessible databases, such as EPA's Water Quality Portal or USGS and WIS database. And so for the 2020 integrated report, that readily available data actually resulted in over seven million rows of data from over 70 organizations. And the data we receive can be both numeric, like the temperature DO bacteria, but it could also be narrative such as aquatic weeds reports, harmful algal bloom advisories, shellfish advisories. And so without clear guidelines that have been set by EPA, DEQ, we're working internally to refine our own guidelines for what it considers to be readily available data and information for future integrated reports to clarify this issue. Okay, next slide, please. So that.
Yeah, I just actually have a question about this because it's a conversation that comes up with OWEB quite a bit. The increase in funding that OWEB has put towards monitoring and trying to dovetail data and quality control criteria and things like that, that would kind of fit this publicly available data that would be high enough quality to be used by DEQ and other agencies. Has there been conversations with OWEB around this readily available data component of this plan?
We haven't spoken to OWEB directly, but we have been working very closely with the volunteer monitoring program, which I think gets a lot of data from OWEB to incorporate that into the integrated reports and working to provide like templates and that, that they can use that would be easily more readily used and easier for us to include in our assessment.
That's just something I'd like to, for staff to keep in mind if.
Oh, definitely.
It is, is the potential for a win-win or an unfortunate missed opportunity? And I'd, I'd really like it to be in that win-win category.
Definitely.
Director Whitman.
Yeah, I can't resist. Kind of to Commissioner Kyle's point, but the same thing with ODFW and the federal fisheries agencies thinking about fish use and to Chair George's point early on about fish use being a driver of a lot of this, what are we doing to confer with, with state and federal and tribal, for that matter, fisheries agencies about fish presence data?
Actually, the standards group is currently working with, they have a technical work group. I think Deb's going to step in to update with the current fish use maps.
Yes, I think we have Deb with a hand up. Go ahead, Deb.
Yeah, you're muted.
Well, as we're waiting for Deb, I can briefly talk about that project. Chair George, members of the commission. So our section, James McConaughey is working on the fish use update project. The project basically defines where we apply temperature and the dissolved oxygen standard. And the main data source is from ODFW database, basically using their most up-to-date fish distribution database to update our temperature and the deal standard where they apply.
Okay, thank you. So in, in the interest of time, I think we had probably better move forward because we did want, we do want to provide an opportunity for at least a few comments on this informational item. And we've got a lot of really interesting conversations yet to come. So we could spend a lot more time on this for sure, but let's go ahead and try to move forward with the presentation.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner George. Next slide, please. So that brings us back to the schedule. I'm just going to run through it quick. We're at the blue arrow. We're completing our methodology. And we are going to begin assessing data in the next couple of weeks. We anticipate having a draft out for public comment yet this winter and will come back before the EQC to provide the informational overview. And we are currently on track for an on-time submitted to EPA in April of 2022. And so with that, thank you for your time. Does anybody have any more questions?
So now I have to violate my own, my own guidance here. So the, the one question I can't resist asking is, so this integrated report, you just talked to us about the components of it and how we, we move through those various processes to have this integrated report. I'm just wondering, is there any point at which, after kind of following the clean water process through to the degree that you just described, is, is there any part where we include in our report some sort of metric for, for those basins where TMDLs have been completed for like best management implementation? So, you know, maybe something either by river mile or percent of basin where best management practices and water quality management plans have been implemented. I know that that is further down the line in terms of our Clean Water Act process and, and related to some of the conversations we're going to have. But is, is there a part at which, you know, if, if an Oregonian, one of our citizens wants to follow through kind of the whole road of the Clean Water Act process where they can go to, to find, you know, in what percentage of basins where we were not meeting water quality standards, those TMDLs are being implemented? Jennifer, please go ahead.
Chair George, so there's, there's a couple of different ways in which that question might be asked and answered. Within the integrated report itself, there's two pieces that address, have a relationship to TMDLs. One piece is when we have an impaired water and a TMDL has been developed, it moves into a category that acknowledges we have a TMDL in place addressing that impairment. So that's one piece of information. We also then, if a water body then has attained its water quality standards, then that shifts into a category that reflects that the, that, that pollutant water quality standard has been attained. If we want to understand things, so, so one thing that I'm saying is in the integrated report, we're really, most of what we're doing is a data analysis in terms of what is our water quality data and information telling us. Where we have the opportunity for more storytelling about what is happening and progress is when we, we have a report and we have two, there's two components to it that is our non-point source. Both our program plan that we have to do every five years that reports on all of the elements that we are working, that DEQ is working on and that we are working with our partners on about the activities that we will be undertaking to implement non-point source controls, as well as an annual plan that documents where those things have, have been put in place. Unlikely to the granular scale, I think that your question asks, I'm not sure that we would have data to support at that granular that we've collected and can assemble in that granular way, but we do have those other kinds of, those other bigger reports that we produce on a annual basis that do talk about activities and efforts underway to address sources of pollution.
Okay. Well, while I'm sure we could talk about this a great deal more, I had better take my own advice. And let's, let's take a look at our schedule here. We want to provide some opportunity for folks to comment on this work so that, you know, the staff can move forward with that information. And yet at the same time, we know that there's going to be a lot of interest in upcoming agenda items as well. So Director and Stephanie, do you have any advice for me on how long we should, we should go for comments on this particular agenda item?
Chair George, this is Stephanie Caldera, your commission assistant. On our website and our information provided, we had asked potential commenters to limit their, their speaking and their comments to two minutes or less.
Okay, excellent. So we will certainly stick with that. And, and did we, did we designate a total amount of time that we would allow public comment for this agenda item?
Chair George.
I think I saw the director shaking his head.
Yeah, Chair George, we did not. So Stephanie, do we have folks signed up for this yet?
Thank you, Director Whitman. Chair George, this is Stephanie Caldera, EQC assistant. On the screen, folks should be seeing directions. If they are interested in commenting, please press the raise hand button. It's usually in the reactions panel on your Zoom dashboard. If you are connected only by phone and would like to present comment, please press star nine. Both those things will, will indicate if there's a person interested to present comment. So Chair George, I will wait a minute just for folks to perhaps do that action. At this time, I see no raised hands in, in the room.
Okay. Well, let's just give that, you know, a few more seconds. And, and if so, that's not a problem. We can move right along. And we do know that later in our agenda, we have additional opportunities for public comment and then an open public comment period tomorrow as well. So we, we won't be too short on opportunities to hear from, from everyone about their thoughts. Any, any hands yet, Stephanie?
At this time, Chair George, I do not see any hands or, or star nine indications for a request to comment specific on the integrated report methodology.
All right then. All right. So let's proceed. And we will move right on to the update on the water quality MOU with the Oregon Department of Forestry.
Just one moment, Chair George, as I move my papers around.
That is absolutely fair.
Okay. Oh, great. Okay. All the rights, all the correct squares are popping up as well. So wonderful. Okay. So again, good afternoon, Chair George and members of the commission. My name's Jennifer Weigle and I am the Deputy Water Quality Administrator. And we're here to talk to you about the DEQ ODF Water Quality Memorandum of Understanding that's under development. And I see that, okay, Director Whitman, you're good. Okay. And with me here today is Kyle Abraham, who's the Acting Deputy State Forester at Department of Forestry. And we also have Diane Lloyd, who is the Senior Assistant Attorney General at DOJ and Contact Counsel for DEQ's Water Quality Program. So today, we're here to give you just a brief overview of DEQ and ODF's efforts to develop a new memorandum of understanding. So as part of this, we're going to review the need for such an MOU. We're going to ask Diane to highlight key aspects of a March 2021 DOJ advice to the agency, which provided important underpinnings for this, for the agency's work. And we'll then highlight key aspects of the current drafted flows with an overview of the agency's plans to finalize this work. Next slide, please, Stephanie. So first, just spending a few moments on why we're undertaking this particular effort. The current MOU that's in place between the tier agencies dates from 1998, which I think most of us can recognize is way too long for, for such an MOU to have significant contemporary relevance. And in particular, that MOU focused significantly on state laws, forestry's administrative rules for, and for implementing TMDLs on forest lands. Also, as we look and look at it in a contemporary lens, it's very outdated. It doesn't reflect changes in water quality requirements. Updated science about the relationship between forestry and water quality. And it doesn't reflect current forest, forest management practices. For DEQ in particular, there's been a significant increase in the specificity of requirements for how states and develop and also assure implementation of TMDLs. And in addition, the type of scientific data, information and understanding regarding water quality and forest practices has significantly increased in the past 23 years. In addition, this MOU, which was drafted in the mid 90s, has not led to efficient nor effective collaboration between the agencies. And both DEQ and ODF recognize that this MOU should serve that purpose and are committed to that outcome. And I think we both also recognize that given the complexity of water quality issues today and the urgency of those, that we need to have a collaborative relationship. We need to be clear about how the agencies are going to operate to support each other in achieving those outcomes. To that end, in March of 2021, the Oregon Department of Justice reviewed the, the existing MOU and also reviewed each agency's legal authorities. And at the request of both ODF and DEQ, DOJ developed a memo that clarified the agency's state and federal authorities. The updated MOU, which is currently in draft form, both reflects and builds on that advice from DOJ and their explanations of current law and agency authority, which Diane's going to talk about in more detail in just a moment. This MOU is also working to address the historical challenge that the agencies have had to collaborate and, and you know, we use that word a lot, but I think, you know, part of that collaboration is also being able to reconcile the technical analyses and conclusions associated with water quality and practices sufficient to achieve water quality outcomes. Both agencies have very clear requirements and expectations to conduct these analyses. And so figuring out how to resolve those analyses and how to align them so that we are pushing toward the same outcome is very important. And so, you know, we also recognize that just in terms of where the agency sit, there's a lot of work on the horizon for both agencies. There's the specific, specific work and requirements that DEQ has to develop temperature TM, we, to update the existing temperature TMDLs in almost all basins around the state over the coming seven years. That work, as we all know, is, is very important to protect salmon in the state and to provide the basis for ongoing actions that are needed to protect Oregon waters. And to provide the basis for ongoing actions that are needed to, um, protect Oregon waters. Um, there are also other TMDLs on the horizon and the sooner we have. These kind, this clarity around roles, responsibilities and how the agencies will work together. The more effective we'll be at not only carrying out our responsibilities, but identifying. Where environmental protections need to occur or any changes that need to occur on the landscape. Um, the agencies have both recognized the need to address how we'll work together to meet our program requirements. So there's current clarity and transparency, not just for agency staff and decision makers, but also for landowners. Other interests in the public about the steps that the agencies will take to improve water quality if standards aren't being met. Um, we also, um, have been placing a significant emphasis on the need to ensure that the two agencies. Establish relationships and trust between, um, our staff and leadership so that as we're working together. And we have, we are freely sharing information, we're having difficult conversations when those need to occur. And that we continue to move our programs forward. Um, so with that, um, by way of background, I'm going to turn it over to Diane. To spend a couple of moments just highlighting some of the, um, key aspects of the advice. Um, that DOJ has provided the agencies.
Sure. Thanks, Jennifer. Good afternoon, Chair George, members of the commission. As Jennifer said, I'm Diane Lloyd. With the Department of Justice and contact counsel for DEQ's water quality program. And as you know, last spring I did work with. Matt DeVore, who's contact counsel for Department of Forestry to provide. Legal advice to both DEQ and ODF regarding the agency's respective authorities to protect water quality on forest lands. I'm going to briefly summarize that advice. At a high level in the requested DOJ, the agencies were interested in further understanding their respective responsibilities to improve conditions. In water bodies with the forest land nexus that were not meeting water quality standards. As you know, the EQC is charged with administering the Clean Water Act in Oregon. And for developing water quality standards as rules that must be approved by EPA. Under the Clean Water Act, when a water body is not meeting water quality standards. A total maximum daily load or TMDL must be developed as a plan. To bring the water body back in, or into compliance with water quality standards. TMDLs themselves are not water quality standards, but once approved by the EPA. They are the state's primary plan for achieving water quality standards in water bodies where standards are not met. And where applicable, TMDLs include requirements for reducing pollution from non-point sources such as forest lands. Generally in Oregon, the Forest Practices Act governs management of forest lands. But where water quality standards are not being met, TMDLs may require forestry to do more. It's the EQC and DEQ's role to determine what pollution reductions are necessary to meet the requirements of a TMDL. ODF, Department of Forestry participates in and provides information during the TMDL development process. But the TMDL is issued by DEQ or the EQC. TMDLs must also be reviewed and approved by EPA to be effective. And in this review, EPA considers whether there is reasonable assurance that the necessary pollution reductions described in the TMDL will occur. To do this, they consider whether practices capable of achieving the reductions meet three requirements. First, whether they exist. Second, whether they are technically feasible at a level necessary to meet the required reductions. And three, that they have a high likelihood of implementation. When a TMDL is issued, if existing Forest Practices Act requirements are insufficient. To achieve the required pollution reductions, it's then. The Board of Forestry and the Department of Forestry's role to determine how to adjust forest practices. To achieve those reductions and to submit a plan to DEQ to do so. Changes to forest practices to achieve TMDL requirements may be voluntary measures. Or the Board of Forestry may undertake rulemaking to adjust Forest Practices Act requirements. State law establishes a process for review of Forest Practices Act rules. When the EQC determines that changes are necessary to meet water quality standards as described in a TMDL. A full copy of this DOJ advice, um, to both agencies that was released publicly is included in the exhibits for this agenda item. Um, and so with that, I'll, uh, turn it back to you, Jennifer and Richard.
Thank you, Diane. Um, and next, Kyle is going to talk a little bit about, um, the key areas that are addressed in the current draft MOU.
Thanks, Jennifer. Um, I think we need to catch up on the slides a little bit, but. Chair George, Commissioners, Director Whitman, for the record, my name is Kyle Abraham. I'm currently serving as the. Deputy State Forester for the Oregon Department of Forestry. Um, you probably remember me for my normal day job, which is the private forest division chief. So thanks for the time. Today and being able to provide this update. Um, as Jennifer mentioned, you know, the MOU really built off of the. March 2021 advice from DOJ, which Diane just did a great job describing. And then this, you know, we spent quite some time talking about the scope of this MOU. Um, knowing that we do have between the agencies, other MOUs that guide some of our work in other arenas. And so some of those, um, are also. Uh, a little bit dated, but clearly we can only take on so much at one time. So this has, um, been a very specific. Focus, as you can imagine, um, on implementing the state's obligations under the Clean Water Act program and particularly for ODF. And the Board of Forestry responsibilities to implement water quality programs to meet those requirements. And then the key focus of this MOU has been identifying key programs that DEQ is responsible for. And when and where ODF and DEQ can engage and continue to collaborate as those programs are carried out. And examples of that are early opportunities to discuss water quality standards. Integrated Report Methodology, which I just caught a snippet of the end. So that's all very. Um, you know, important work for a number of, um, constituents, including ODF. And then also TMDL priorities. Opportunities to identify data and information that can be brought into those processes. And collaboration on identifying strategies for implementation of TMDL load allocations. Also were key elements of the MOU that we sought to provide that transparency. And then more specifically, if DEQ or ODF identify. If we identify a need to address water quality protections. The MOU describes the processes for how the agencies. Will develop and implement those actions, including identifying how ODF will implement. TMDL, TMDL load allocations. Including options for, um, relying on existing plans. Where needed, potential regulatory programs and also non-regulatory options. And then as an additional note, in the 21 legislative session. ODF did receive some technical capacity in the form of three positions, which will help us provide input into the implementation. Plans, which are part of the TMDLs, as you know. And also increase our capacity to interact closer with DEQ throughout the development of TMDLs. So we. Um, you know, envision our capacity to be able to engage on a number of levels. Including policy, which will be, um, augmented by those additional positions. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the rough, this is the timeline that we've been sort of, um. Going with, um, so far. And as you can see, we're probably into, um, the middle of this. Uh, flow chart, end of September, 2021. We did release the draft MOU for public comment. In, on September 1st with 30 days, 30 day window. And that comment period was scheduled to end today.
Just a moment, Kyle. Um, Director Whitman.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle. I'm going to jump in here because, um, I want to. Uh, let the commission know and, and let those who are listening know, and we'll publish this, um, in the appropriate places. Uh, here later today, but. Uh, Chair George, we did receive, um, some additional requests for extension on the public comment period for the MOU and. I've conferred with State Forester, uh, Acting State Forester Nancy Hirsch about that. And we have decided that we will, we are going to grant a one week. Uh, extension of the comment period, uh, for public comment on the MOU. Uh, in response to the last set of extension requests that we received, um, just for your knowledge. Uh, that request was signed by a fairly large number of environmental organizations. And they were requesting an extension of two months, um, a two month time period. We are not granting that request. We are granting a short request. Of one week, uh, if people need a little bit more time to get. Written comments in, and I just want to say a little bit about why we're doing that. One thing that doesn't really come across in these, these presentations is the urgency of this work. Um, we are now 23 years after the 1998. Adoption of the initial memorandum of agreement between DEQ and ODF and we are now. 24 years after the initial listings of salmon as threatened or endangered. And we have both, uh, throughout the state of Oregon. And the status of our fisheries, particularly our salmon. Continues to decline, particularly in the last year or two, uh, perhaps with the very. Tough climatic conditions that we have seen here in Oregon. We really are facing a crisis in our fisheries and. So while I am sympathetic to the request for an extension. This MOU has been out there in draft for some period of time and we need to get going on this work. We, there really is urgency around this work and, um. We spent a lot of time today talking about. Water quality standards and a little bit about TMDLs and it can all sound very bureaucratic and very dry, but. Getting this, getting this MOU in place and behind us frankly, and getting the agencies working together in partnership. To implement the MOU is of the utmost importance. And, um, that's why we're doing what we're doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Director. Um, I appreciate you sharing that. Uh, I do appreciate the, the one week extension. Um, cause certainly we, we want people to participate and to comment to the maximum extent possible. Uh, under these circumstances, I, I do also support the, the one week extension. Um, I, if we have time, I might say a little bit more, but, uh, the folks who participated in this process know that one of the things I have. I've talked about many times is that sense of urgency and that, you know, looking back on that record that you just made reference to. Uh, we have to look and see how many of these TMDLs. Uh, wherein our partner agency or at least one of our many partner agencies is forestry. You know, do we have, are we implementing water quality management plans? And so, um, we might have more time to speak to that, but this truly is urgent. So. Uh, thanks very much. Sorry for the interruption, Kyle, but I do think that was important and we will go ahead and turn it back over to you.
Great. Yeah. Thank you for that clarification. Um. So I just had one last thing and then maybe I'll turn it over to Jennifer to summarize any. Details on comments to date, but we will, uh, consider the comments. Received through that extension period of one week. Make any appropriate edits to the MOU and plan to bring the final draft of the MOU back to the. EQC and the Board of Forestry at a joint meeting on November 17th is the current plan. We'll also provide an overview of the comments received, the responses to those comments and the final draft at that same time. And then final note that the DEQ Director. And the soon to be new State Forester will, will be signatories on the MOU when it's final. Thanks. And that's, um, that's all I have.
Thanks very much, Kyle. Vice Chair Prasso.
Um, Kyle, just want to appreciate you coming and continuing to chat, chat us through this and, and look forward to. Coming to the comment and getting to the November meeting and, and digesting all of this. Um, I, I know that, you know, we were spoken and connected with, with, with Director Whitman on this and I, I appreciate everything that's here and. And all the details that, that certainly this MOU is working through and, 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 and laying out. Um, it's complicated and, and, and certainly understanding water quality. Regulation, water quality, uh, and, and, and all the practices that lead to improvement on water quality is, is complicated. So I, I guess. I know that, uh, Richard, in, in conversation, you, 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 we were, as you're brainstorming, I know that I, I, one thing that came up was. Just whether there could be a visual, a flow chart that better describes in a little bit more visual way. A lot of what, what, what is here and, and certainly I know that it is always a challenge to simplify something into that level since it, it, it is going to inherently. Um, it is going to inherently remove some of the details that are here, but just to be able to visually walk through so that. We are all able to collectively know what are, what, what, what is the sequence and how do we work in a way that it, that, that, that. That leans itself for us to not have to understand each, each of the minutiae and, 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 and here. So I think. Um, and, and for others more, more publicly to be able to see that and understand what is the relationship visually. So. That's just, that's all I would, that's something I would like to see. Um, and, and I'm happy as, as if, if, if. If there are tensions in terms of what it means to try to get that there, I'm happy to be part of those conversations because it just needs to make sense. That someone doesn't need to go through the entirety of the MOU to understand what that, that relationship looks like.
Jennifer.
Yes. Thank you, Chair George and Vice Chair Prasso. Um, thank you for that observation. Um, we share that. And actually we are, we are working on a flow chart as you describe. Um, and in full transparency, we had an initial one drafted. It had too much spaghetti. Um, so we, uh. Um, we, uh, it didn't quite hit the mark that you were describing and that we also had for ourselves to be able to. Um, try to find some kind of graphic that would explain some of those. Both relationships and commitments and process points a little bit more clearly. So. Um, that's something that's in, in, in drafting right now and we would anticipate it to accompany the, the final MOU.
That's great to hear. Director Whitman.
Thank you, Chair George, and thank you, Jennifer. And, um, yeah, we'll, we'll get that flow chart. Before you, um, for the November meeting and, and really, um, keep in mind the. Desire for clarity and in as much simplicity as we can, um, in, in putting that together. Um, somewhat intention with that statement, I, I just want to flag for the commission. You know, in the comments we have received so far on the draft MOU. One of the themes that we have heard is a desire for more detail. In the MOU. And so people, I, and it's a natural tendency. I think when people look at a document like this and it's a fairly long document already. They really want to understand how it's going to be applied in a particular setting, in a particular basin where we're. Developing a TMBL and then the implementation plan and working together with forestry and other designated management agencies. They want to understand. You know, if such and such condition exists. Then what, what's the, what's the consequence of that? And. Um, part of the reason that there isn't even more detail in the MOU is because. And I just want to flag this more for the public than, than even the commission. The conditions in particular basins vary from basin to basin. And so. Exactly how this gets applied in basins as we do TMDLs is necessarily going to. Be somewhat basin specific. And so that's, we have thought about this a fair amount. Um, and thought about this issue. But I think for many members of the public, you're not really going to. We're, we're going to need to go through this work and actually do this work in. A basin or two or three before people really understand how this. Um, relationship between DEQ and the Department of Forestry and others works. works in the context of our efforts to meet water quality standards. So I know people would love it if we could paint a very detailed picture that paints all of that in advance. But we also need to leave some space for those processes of TMDL development and adoption and implementation plan development and approval for people to engage, uh, in the public to engage in those efforts. And recall that as we go forward, these TMDLs that we're, we're doing will be to an increasing degree, we are proposing that they come before the commission, not the director, not, not in a kind of opaque process, but in a very transparent process with the commission. Uh, where you have an opportunity to grapple with some of those specific situations and the public is able to engage in that process also. So I, I say that just by again, way of really for the public to understand. This is a first chapter of a new book about how we are going to get to truly clean water in the state of Oregon. And not everything is revealed in the first chapter. We're going to have to, we're going to have to write this book together uh, over the course of the coming years. And so with that, I'll stop.
Thank you, Richard, for that. I'll, I'll just share one more time, my thanks to former Commissioner Wade Mosby. I think that's important at this time. Wade has always been our liaison with the Board of Forestry and we, we thank him for that. And of course with his very rich history and background, uh, working in that interest industry, that has been tremendously helpful. And, uh, you know, Wade has been in on pretty much all of these meetings. We have regular meetings between, um, the, the lead staff folks for this work and, uh, the director and the State Forester or Acting State Forester and the Chair of the Board of Forestry and the EQC. And from the start, Wade was really clear that he wanted to see something really happen here. He, and he felt a sense of urgency, you know, in addition to being a forestry person, he was also a fisherman. And he always said, he'd always say, I'm a water guy and we need, we need to do better. So I think it's with tremendous respect for his desire that we work together to, to find a clearer path forward that, that we undertake this work. One of the, I think the, the three things I've tried to emphasize throughout the effort is number one, we, we started from a place at looking, you know, where the relationship and processes between the two agencies were. And, and I identified early that one of the things I wanted to do is I wanted to eliminate inefficient and ineffective process or redundant process. I wanted, I wanted both our agencies to together to choose to move beyond that and to really try to clarify how this Clean Water Act process is supposed to be implemented, where forestry fits into that. And while no document is perfect, I think we're taking a major step in that direction. And I really want to start, thank our staff for, for supporting that. Also, I wanted to ensure that, you know, after TMDLs that incorporate forest lands and contributions to loads and streams from forest lands, um, that that process of the designated management agencies developing water quality implementation plans in a timely manner and submitting them to DEQ. I wanted to make sure that, you know, by the time we got to a new chapter, so to speak, that we had a clear process for doing that, we had a timeframe for doing that. And so I think this takes a, a step in that direction. And again, the, the staff, the thanks goes to staff for that. Uh, and then thirdly, what you mentioned earlier, um, Richard, is something that I, I just share and I, I feel I need to reiterate, which is there, there has to be a sense of urgency that I didn't feel there was, you know, at the beginning of the process, or at least it wasn't generally recognized. Uh, in, in many of these watersheds where we have forestry contributions, you know, it's often going to be like things like temperature and sedimentation that are going to drive, drive the TMDL process. And, and DEQ has an obligation to protect beneficial uses. And so those selmoned life net necessities are often going to be those most sensitive uses in these types of TMDL. And, uh, you know, I can just say where, where I live in, in the land basin, things are utterly desperate for our, our selmoned and our lamprey fisheries. They, they are just utterly desperate. Uh, we have two core populations of upper spring Chinook salmon that are presumed extinct at this time. Um, I can say on, on our little feeder stream to our reservation agency creek, uh, the, the winter steelhead return is in collapse. It's in utter collapse. Over the last several years, we've had single digit returns. Uh, our most recent, uh, you know, year I have data for is, is 2020 when we had six steelhead returning. And I know that there's, uh, there's a diverse landscape and there's a diversity of experience across our landscape. But in many places, uh, this, this work is truly urgent. So to see our, our departments come together and coordinate our processes to get everybody to work, I just think is commendable. And I think that time is, is utterly of the essence. So one, one more time, uh, thanks to everybody who's working on this and we'll look forward to, to moving forward soon. All right. Do we have anything else for this agenda item at this time? All right. Seeing none. We will move forward and get an update about the diversity, equity and inclusion work at DEQ.
All right. Thank you Chair George. Members of the commission, for the record, Richard Whitman, DEQ Director. I'm presenting this agenda item. I do, we will provide an opportunity toward the end of this agenda item for you to hear about and perhaps see some of the others at DEQ who are doing work in this area as well. But I'm going to kick it off for today. So let me set the stage. I want to, I want to talk about several things in this report to the commission. First of all, a note, uh, we had an agenda item on diversity, equity and inclusion work back in January of this year. And, um, I presented at that time, we also had Oregon's, the local of Oregon DEQ's union also presented at that time and passed on some of the thoughts and work that they have been doing on this issue as well. And I, we are still, I think, waiting for our, our local union latest amendments to our local union contract to be ratified. But I will note that the proposed agreement does include a new section on diversity, equity and inclusion that we bargained and worked together with the union on. And so I'll, I perhaps can say more about that in a future meeting, but just, I do want to acknowledge the work of our union on this issue. It's been an important part of the effort in the agency to advance diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, but what I wanted to do today is actually start it at one level up from that and talk a little bit about what's going on at the enterprise level in state government in Oregon, led of course by Oregon Governor Brown. And I think for Governor Brown, um, this work on racial justice and diversity equity and inclusion is really a central part of her prioritization of, of work here in her administration, both during the last legislative session, in her administration, between sessions and in sessions to come. One of the specific tasks that the governor asked the enterprise of state government to take on was developing a, uh, a state diversity, equity and inclusion action plan. And that, um, that plan has been completed and is available on the Department of Administrative Services and I think the governor's website also. Um, it includes some definitions of terms that I have had to paraphrase here in PowerPoint, but just to give people a sense of what are we talking about when we're talking about diversity, equity and inclusion? We're talking about increasing representation of people who are underrepresented in state government right now. Um, or, and people who have been historically under-resourced in terms of their access to state government. We're talking about equity. We're talking, which is fundamentally about fairness and recognizing that different people in different communities are starting at different places in terms of their ability to be a part of state government, to engage with state government. And we need to recognize those different starting places and um, account for them in terms of the work that we're doing in order to really give fair and equal access to everybody that, that interacts with the state. And then finally, really about a culture of inclusion in state government. Uh, and I've been spending a lot of time on this recently, but really in, in this, it's not just for DEQ or state government, but really for the nation. Moving from really traditional hierarchical approaches to governance in decision-making to a much more inclusive, engaged approach to how we make decisions and how we collectively decide how we want to allocate our resources. And so that, that goes for state government also. And, um, really creating that culture of inclusivity, uh, where we reach out to and listen for and value lived experience, different perspectives from all parts of society and the work that we do. Uh, next slide, please. So this is going to be a little bit hard to read, but I just want to note that one part of the, the state level, enterprise level action plan on diversity, equity and inclusion is a set of strategies. And that, so that starts to operationalize. Okay, what do we mean by this work and what are we going to do next? And so I'm not going to tick off all 10 of these strategies, but I'm just going to link them to work that we are doing here at DEQ. And the first is developing an agency-specific racial equity plan. Um, you're going to hear a little bit more about that in a minute in the context of our uh, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Council at DEQ. This will be one piece of work that, that council will be taking on as part of its work plan going forward. Building DEI infrastructure. And so at DEQ, we have several key pieces of that infrastructure and I'm going to talk about each of them briefly in this presentation. And I want to start with the DEI council. Um, that is a permanent body that has been set up in the agency that was created through an open, transparent process where we had over 30 people apply for seats on the DEI council. And, and we had a group of volunteers who set up criteria for selection and for assuring we had a diverse range of viewpoints and experience represented on that council. But that council has now been selected. It has not had its first meeting yet, but it will shortly. And I'll come back to it in a minute. So that's piece number one of the infrastructure. Piece number two is a diversity, equity and inclusion coordinator at the agency, a person to really organize, support the council to keep the work moving forward and to tie the work, um, different pieces of the work together and also tie the work that DEQ is doing to work that other agencies are doing around DEI. A third piece of that infrastructure is some outside expertise. We are, nobody at DEQ is an expert in this work. And, um, we have some great volunteers that have developed and, and bring some expertise to this. But we also have contracted with some outside consulting experts to help us with some of this work. And I'll, I'll talk about that briefly in this presentation as well. So that's a third piece of the infrastructure. And then the fourth and final piece is affinity groups that are, have been set up in the agency to provide a place for people that identify with those groups to share experience and uh, to support each other really as part of the DEQ community. And again, we were pushed to do that by our workers and we have done that. And I am actually really excited about the level of engagement we've got in the affinity groups. And they've, they've been contributing a lot to the agency in addition to supporting each other. Um, so a, a, a fourth element of this is strengthening community engagement. Um, and you, and a fifth element is utilizing disaggregated data as a lever for change. Those phrases and are directly linked to environmental justice. And, um, we will have our presentation tomorrow morning on environmental justice work that is going on at the agency as well. I'm focusing today on diversity, equity and inclusion, but it's, it is very much related to work around environmental justice and work around how DEQ, how, what DEQ needs to do to assure that we are carrying out our mission to be leaders in protecting air, land and water quality with regard to particular communities. And, and especially communities that historically have had a heavier burden in terms of public health impacts from, um, from a variety of sources. And so that fairness element that, um, in the public health element of thinking about not everybody's in the same place in terms of the communities that we work with, that is part of the governor's overall strategy on diversity, equity and inclusion. And for DEQ, it really fits in the work that we're doing around environmental justice. Um, and again, I'm not going to talk more about that this afternoon. We will talk more about it tomorrow. Um, building a more diverse workforce and creating an inclusive workplace. You know, um, DEQ is, uh, the workforce at DEQ, we do track overall statistics on racial and ethnic identification of our workers over time. And we have made some very modest improvements in diversity in our workforce, but we are still underrepresented for a number of important racial and ethnic groups in the agency. And we are not, we have not hit even the statewide averages for racial and ethnic diversity on our statewide population basis. So we have a long way to go in this. What we are seeing is going forward increasingly, we are seeing more, uh, more diverse pool of applicants for jobs at DEQ, including a lot of folks from, frankly, from outside of the state of Oregon and, um, that, which is wonderful. And, uh, so we are seeing opportunity. Um, and I think we're getting better at reaching out to, to diverse communities that might be, maybe we didn't do such a good job in the past in reaching out to in terms of getting that pool of applicants. Um, but there's a lot of work to do in that area. And then finally, uh, you know, operating with urgency, transparency and accountability. Frankly, that's part of why, um, I think we wanted to make a point of bringing this work to the Environmental Quality Commission. It is about the internal workings of DEQ. It's not something you necessarily get directly involved in that much. But we want you to be aware of this work, of why we're doing this work, of the problems that we've had that are driving this work. And, um, you know, we want to be transparent, uh, about those problems and, um, make sure that we have your support for, for addressing them. So that's why we are doing this presentation this afternoon. All right. With that, if I could get the next slide, please. So I mentioned affinity groups. And we have really five affinity groups up and functioning in the agency, and these have all been going for a little while now. We have actually two affinity groups for folks who identify as BIPOC in the agency, one group for staff and another group for management service. They do. And, and so that's, those are two of the groups. We have a DEQ pride group that is up and functioning. Also, that's, I think, the most recent of the groups that has formed here. We have a veterans and armed services group, and this is something that people don't always think about is a group of individuals with a shared set of experiences that because of that lived experience, you know, have, have a different perspective that they bring to their work at DEQ. And so having an affinity group for veterans and members of the armed services has been important for us. And then finally, we have an allies group, an allies for racial justice group that has over 100 members and I think growing in the agency that has been very active also. So again, just note a lot of good energy, constructive push from some of these groups to make progress on on work in the agency. And we really appreciate the folks who have devoted time to these groups and supporting each other and supporting the mission of the agency. Next slide, please. So the next piece I want to talk about in a little more detail is the DEI council. And again, the DEI council is the permanent body where we intend to be the locus of the diversity, equity and inclusion work that goes on at DEQ, which and it's really important for people to understand, this does not mean the DEI council does the work around diversity, equity and inclusion. That's work the rest of us do. But they help guide where, where we're paying attention, where we're devoting resources and the rest of the agency to help people with diversity, equity and inclusion. And so this council includes me as the director, as a non-voting member of the council. It'll include also the DEI coordinator is the facilitator and really staff person supporting the council. It includes 10 union representative staff and, and actually a union representative. And then it includes four management services or managers in the agency, including a human resources representative. Let's see, the, there is a draft charter for the DEI council that was put together by a what we've called the DEI transition team in the agency that's been working on helping with all this infrastructure over the last nine months. And one of the first tasks of the DEI council will be to look at that draft charter and see what changes the council wants to make to those. This is a self-governing body within the agency that is responsible for guiding this work in the agency. So it is a bit of a new model for for DEQ in terms of how we do our work and how it's led that I'm, I'm intrigued by and very excited by is a model for the rest of the agency. Next slide, please. All right. So who do we have? I'm going to give you just a quick snapshot here of the individuals that we have on the DEI council and invite any of those individuals that we have listening in to show up on your screen so you can put names with faces a little bit, but hey, everybody. Nice. Great turnout. So again, we have 14 individuals on the DEI council and it starts with Shemal, I see Shemals here, Shemals from the Office of Policy and External Relations here in headquarters. We've got Mike Kazinsky from our Western Region Cleanup Program. Mike's a manager. We've got Willow Willbanks from Human Resources as well there. Well, is there, I'm Willa. Leela Yellet-Seddy with Trainees' Operation and Policy. Leela is our public, really our lead on public records work in the agency in her, in her her day job, although she's done so much on DEI. Alonda Abrams, who is with Central Services, a public service representative. One of our, kind of one of our front desk workers, if you will, a great, really important perspective to have present on in this work. Sophia is with the lab in the organic section. Hi, Sophia. So we've got lab representation on this group as well. Jimena Cusquera, who you're going to be hearing from tomorrow, who's been playing a leading role also on environmental justice work. Hi, Jimena. Jimena's day job is on underground storage tanks in Northwest region. If I'm, yeah, that's right. Yuki Boron from Air Quality Title V Compliance, Western Regions. Let's see. Okay, my screen's so small, it's hard for me to see faces. So it's great to have somebody from Western Region here, actually a second person along with Mike Kazinsky. Emily Euler, who's our executive, hey Emily, she supports our Bend Office and our Eastern Region Administrator and more news to come on Eastern Region Administrator tomorrow in Director's Report. Great to have somebody from Eastern Region on the group. Alex Bertolucci, Northwest Region. Hi, Alex. Let's see, Robert Ryan, also a public service representative in our VIP program, vehicle inspection program at the Northeast Station. Again, a big program that DEQ have got a lot of people in that program. It's really important to have VIP representation. Alex Cooley, Water Quality, Western Region, Program Analyst. Yeah, Alex. Shamil Hartman, Office Specialist in our Watersheds Program in Northwest Region. Hi, Shamil. And Karen Williams, whom you've, many of you have seen before, Air Quality Planner in Headquarters, works on a lot of rule makings that come to the commission. So that is the council. I am really excited by this group and by the energy that people are bringing to this group. And I think this is really going to be really important work for the agency and to have this group really leading the effort along with a DEI coordinator, and I'll talk about that in just a sec here, I think really positions us well. So I want to thank the individuals who are on the council who already are spending time on this. If you were to go to the DEI Council Intranet page, you'd see all the homework that they've been given already to do, which includes training sessions and background materials and so we are going to be having our first meeting of the council here in the very near future and roll up our sleeves and really get going on this work. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Richard, just before we move on, I just want to take a minute to also, on behalf of the commission, recognize all these amazing individuals and, you know, the folks who are working in the affinity groups. It is difficult to bring change to a large, you know, government institution. But it is so exciting and it is inspiring to see so many DEQ employees stepping up and leading the way and leading the agency from, from wherever your seat is, right? And that's, that's leadership is leading from wherever you are. And you folks are doing that. And I want to raise my hands to you, which is what we do where I come from, but I also just want to thank you on behalf of the EQC. We're going to hear some more about it and some more about the plans, but just before the conversation turned, I really wanted to thank you on behalf of the commission. This is exciting work. We have to have a department that represents the beautiful diversity of Oregonians. We know we have a lot of work to do. We have to be honest about that. That's the first step. But with your help, we can do that and we can change DEQ to be a department that reflects the beautiful diversity of Oregonians. And that is the very best way to root our work in, in the, in to root our work in our community so that we can best serve Oregonians. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair George. Okay. Vice Chair.
Okay, I'm looking for my hands. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you great.
Okay, good, good. I, I just equally, I just wanted to just show my appreciation. I, I feel it's, it's, I think I've been on the commission now for four years and it, we've come a long way and I think, you know, I, I feel like I've, I've, you know, it's just, it's very heartening to be in, in, in this place now and just to see, I mean, I don't, I think Richard briefed us on, on, on this coming up on the agenda, but to see all the faces show up. It is, it's exciting. And I know that there's, I know that we're all collectively here incredibly excited to see that work and know that it's going to take, it's going to take time and it's going to take a lot of hard thinking, a lot of culture change and a lot of work. And we're certainly, and I, and I just, I'm, I'm, we've got our full support and, and and yeah, I'm excited to see the great work ahead. It's, there are few agencies that do this kind of work in the way that this, the work that this agency does connects with community. So it's, it's great to see this kind of internal focus and thinking about what our agency looks like. Thank you all.
Yeah, and I just, just very briefly, want to kind of echo those sentiments as well. The members of the council and the affinity groups, I really appreciate the efforts that you're working on to help improve the agency. It is so important and I just want to, while Richard is here and kind of leading this part of it, just emphasize that it's important that you have the sufficient time and institutional support from your managers to do this work so that it isn't an add-on, but rather integrated into the entire programs.
Thank you, Commissioner Cowan and Vice Chair Barasso. Appreciate those remarks and yeah, the remark about this is not an add-on. This is about integrating this into the everyday work of the entire agency is really important for people to understand. And it's not going to happen overnight. I don't want to sugarcoat where we are currently. We've got a lot of work to do. And we've had bumps even in the last, particularly in the last year where we've lost individuals that I wish we had not lost. So we have work to do, but having this group, having their energy, having their leadership is, that's how we're going to make change. So with that, if I could get the next slide, please Stephanie. The last two pieces of the infrastructure around this work at DEQ are a diversity, equity and inclusion coordinator and then some consulting services. And on the coordinator position, this is a position that was authorized and funded by the legislature in the last legislative session, and we have been going through a very thorough recruitment process to make a decision about the DEI coordinator hiring. I, I have to tell you, we had over 180 applications for this position. We did, we did a lot of reach out. Thank you to our human resources folks to various groups and that are active in this area of doing work around diversity, equity and inclusion. I did a I, an open opportunity where I was able to talk about my vision for this work in the agency in this position and have potential candidates listen in and ask me questions. We did that at the front end of this process. We had, I think, over 100 people called in for that session. So I know a lot of organizations are leaning into this work right now, but I just want to say, I think in part because of our mission and our responsibility to be protecting communities in Oregon from the public health impacts of air pollution, water pollution and contamination of our lands. It, it puts us in a position where there's some extra interest and people just get the connection between our mission and diversity, equity and inclusion and how our workforce needs to embrace diversity, equity and inclusion in order for us to be really effective at our mission of working to protect communities. So I think that's a real opportunity for this agency and we're serious about moving our work and our workforce and how we think about our work in that direction as we move forward. And you're hearing a lot about this today. There are some other pieces you'll hear about in, in future presentations, but I'm really excited. So we are down to two finalists for our DI coordinator. We're doing some final evaluation now that we've narrowed it from 180 to two, to, to select the final candidate. I also am going to be taking some steps to devote some additional resources to this work in the short term because I think it's very important to make sure our coordinator and our council really do, to your point, Chair George, have the resources they need to be successful. And so we are thinking about that also and trying to be very intentional about that. We, we most likely will be seeking some additional resources on a permanent basis from the legislature around this as well. So the coordinator will support the council. Also will be a primary point of contact for this work with other state agencies. And then also we'll oversee some of the contract administration for consultant services. On the consultant services, final piece of this, we have gone through an RFP process and I think are almost through the selection of consultants to help us with training, starting with a leadership team, including managers, including staff, ongoing education around diversity, equity and inclusion facilitation of both the DEI council and other meetings on this. And then also helping really is a, almost a subcontractor. I think technically it's not a subcontract, but helping support and center diversity, equity and inclusion and strategic planning work that we are just about ready to pick back up again, but it has been on pause largely because we wanted to get this foundational work around diversity, equity and inclusion done so that we could feed it into our strategic planning effort. And Leah Felden, who's here is really leading that work around strategic planning. So more to come on that in a, in a future meeting. So that's what I have for you today on this. Like I said, this is not going to be done in a year. It's not going to be done in two years. This is you know, this needs to be integrated into our regular work on a permanent, long-term basis going on, you know, far into the future.
Yes, absolutely. So thank you for the update. That was very exciting. I think you can see that all of the commissioners, commissioners are pleased to hear it and and are really going to be eager to hear about this work moving forward. In particular, Richard, I appreciate your mentioning this strategic planning process. That of course is going to be a perfect place to integrate into the key goals and missions of this, this department, how we, how we live those values through the work of DEQ. So thanks very much for that update. Vice Chair Barasso.
Can anyone else here say?
Wow, I see where I'm double muted. Okay, sorry, I know we're running short on time, so I'll just ask one question, follow up with others. But what's the relationship between the DI coordinator and just the, the department HR team?
Now it's my turn. It's a great question, Vice Chair Barasso. So the way I would articulate that is in a couple of aspects to that, the DI coordinator is reporting directly to me. Number one. Our HR manager reports to Brian Bowling, who's the head of our central services. But I see that DI coordinator also is having a really important consulting role with our HR shop is, is we do this work going forward. Because part of this work, in addition to the training and education, facilitation, kind of the culture change work, there does need to be a more formal part of the work, which is the HR side. It's the systems for assuring that we are, if there are problems, if there are microaggressions or worse than microaggressions or conflicts involving race or ethnicity or other forms of diversity, unprofessional workplace behavior in this area, that we have systems for tracking that and responding to it promptly and effectively across the board, whether it's staff or managers. So I, and I don't mean that in a, in a negative way. I mean it really in a positive way of assuring that we are creating safety for people to be themselves at work and that as we do this work also, there's, you know, inevitably there's going to be situations where people do not feel safe and some of that may take forms with, it takes a more formal response. So having those systems in place and being confident that we've got adequate support for that is an important part of this, that work. And that's the HR side. But it, it, it probably takes a heavy consult from the DI coordinator to help design and monitor how that system works. Thank you. Yep, great question and reflects that you've been doing this work, some probably yourself. Yeah. Okay. Chair George, I think that's it for this agenda item.
Okay, thank you for the good update. All right, so we will begin the update on the climate protection program. And this is also by way of kind of an introduction. We'll have this update and then we'll take a break and then we will move into the hearing on the climate protection program. So welcome Colin and Nicole.
Good afternoon, Chair George, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Colin McConaughey. I manage our Office of Greenhouse Gas Programs. But before I start, I believe Director Whitman has an announcement he'd like to make before we dig into our brief presentation here.
Thank you Colin and thank you Chair George. You've been hearing too much from me over the course of the last hour, but I've got one more thing and then I'll get out of the way and let others talk, which is for the, for the Commission, but also for those listening in. We've got about 80 people now. We've received multiple requests for an extension of the comment period on the climate protection program rules, including a request from Oregon Business and Industry, but also from, from others. And we have made a decision that we are going to go ahead and grant the request for additional time for public comment. And specifically, we're going to allow an additional 21 days for public comment on the proposed rule. So that takes us, I believe, to October 25th. Got to get it right Colin. Okay, October 25, 4pm in the afternoon. We will get written notice of this out to people also. I, I know some people are probably a little cranky that we waited and did not immediately respond to the request for an extension of the comment period. And I, I just a brief remark about why on that. I talked a little while ago about the urgency of the work on improving water quality and really attaining clean water in order to, particularly in order to avoid extinction frankly of a number of our fisheries in the state of Oregon. You know, in, in many ways, that's another manifestation of the climate crisis that we are in. And we are, I believe, in a climate crisis. And so part of the hesitation and reluctance frankly, to grant an extension of the comment period on this is in one part, recognition that the team that has been working on the climate protection program rules has done an outstanding job of public outreach and engagement over the course of the last year and a half in multiple forums around the state and all sorts of different settings to hear from the public about approaches to reducing greenhouse gas emissions in Oregon. And I'm very appreciative of the work that the team has done. That's number one. Number two, the urgency piece. We have a risk here that if we do not get this program up and running soon, we are going to lose a whole nother calendar year before we even get started on this work. And so we have been evaluating whether we can accommodate an additional comment opportunity, recognizing, you know, legitimate desire to have more time and to provide more input, but also trying to balance that with the urgency of the climate crisis. And so we are going to go ahead and grant the request for a 21-day extension. We've done that because we have, have worked hard to try to figure out how to still be able to respond to the public comments that we receive with, within that extended time. And I want to be upfront with the Commission, that's going to put a little bit more pressure on you all. You're going to have a little bit less time to read staff materials in preparation for that meeting where we're going to bring these rules to you for your consideration in order to accommodate this public comment. But so we're balancing, balancing the urgency, the need to allow the Commission to be appropriately deliberative and also balancing the legitimate high level of public interest in this program. And that's where we've landed. And I wanted to say all that before we got into the presentation and public comment period because I do not want people to spend that limited amount of time that they and we have to hear their comments to talk about process. I really would encourage people to focus their comments on substantive issues that they think the Commission needs to consider as they consider this proposed program and proposed rules. And I wanted to do, so I wanted to do that in fairness to everybody before we got into the hearing that is about to begin. Thank you, that's all I have.
Great. Thanks Director Whitman. So with that, I'm going to dive right in. I know we have a very limited amount of time here with the Commission and we have a brief update, much briefer than we have had at past meetings, which included our, the Commission's July meeting at which we presented our proposed rules that we were planning to publish weeks later. And this is, this update is simply intended to do two things. Provide you with an update on what went out the door. There were a few late-breaking changes that we made that we weren't able to present to you in July. So I want to make sure the Commission is aware of those changes. And then we have just a real high-level overview of some common comments that are already coming in just to acquaint you with some of the input we're already seeing come, come through in our comment period. So you see here reflected the updated timeline for, here we published our rules on August 5th. We had our first public hearing last week. And then of course, we have our second public hearing this evening. And, and now with the, the updated deadline, as Director Whitman mentioned, is October 25th. So that'll be, that'll be a full 81-day public comment period. Once that closes, we will respond to every comment received. I think we've received nearly 5,000 comments already and expect many more to come through in the coming weeks. Respond to each of those comments, develop our staff report, finalize our fiscal, make any changes in response to those comments, changes to the rules, to propose those. We hope by the end of November now, as Director Whitman mentioned, things are getting rejiggered a little bit here with the extent, the comment extension, with the intent still to have the full proposal ready for EQC consideration at the end of this month. And so that's our, just our pressure on, on the process that we're in right now. And I'm going to hand it right over to Nicole Singh to present the next three slides.
Thank you Colin and thanks again Commissioners for making the time for us. I will try to keep this as brief as possible, but as Colin said, we did want to provide some updates on things that changed since our last conversation with the EQC and what was reflected in the, the rule that was released to the public. So I could spend a lot of time going through all these, but a few things that we did want to point out is, you know, we did make some changes to how the department would make determinations around the best available emissions reductions approach. Again, the best available emissions reductions approach is the site-specific approach for those facilities that have like industrial process emissions or other types of emissions that are not covered in other parts of the program. And one of the things we wanted to, we changed, and a lot of this was based on the comments that we continue to receive after our last RAC meeting in July and also comments that were heard at the last EQC meeting. One of the things we wanted to really be clear about is that DEQ, there's lots of different types of information that we can use when we're trying to make a determination about the best available emissions reduction, but we absolutely do have to consider input from surrounding communities. I'll, I'll just touch upon this briefly. I think that the Commission has heard us say that one of the more complicated parts of this rule has been trying to figure out how we distribute the compliance instruments to the regulated entities. Again, we do have to distribute the instruments for free. And because of a lot of the variability in our liquid fuels and our propane suppliers, that variability has kind of created a more complex way for us to distribute these instruments. But on the flip side, what we've heard from a lot of our natural gas utilities is that that same level of complexity and variability doesn't exist in that sector. And so therefore, we have kind of streamlined the approach for how we would do the distribution of compliance instruments for those utilities. And we've actually specified the actual number of compliance instruments they would receive in the rule itself. Another change, again, the Commission is well aware, we get lots of comments and I'm, we're going to sure hear lots more comments about the Community Climate Investments Program. Again, the Community Climate Investments is like the alternative way in which regulated entities can reduce their missions again by contributing funds to a, a third party that would then, therefore then kind of invest that money into projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So again, we heard a lot of comments about, you know, there being some concerns about having too much CCIs at the beginning of the program. But of course, we've also heard from our regulated entities that CCIs are going to become very important, particularly as the cap starts to decrease in the future. So kind of balancing those comments, we did, we did make some changes in the proposed rule. We basically reduced the percentage that could be used for CCIs at the beginning of the program and then it grows to 20% over, over time. Another change that we made was, we basically were trying to balance the fact that regulated entities are going to be contributing the funds to these CCI third-party entities directly. And so one of the things we did decide to do in the rule was to say that when these, when these, when regulated entities are making these contributions to these third-party entities, that money is going to be basically evenly split amongst the available CCI entities. And that, that really is an attempt to try to make sure that all the CCI entities have enough funding and also to make sure that we, not in a situation where some projects get more funding than others because, you know, regulated entities have selected different CCI entities for receiving the funds. And I think one other important change that was made in the August rule related to CCIs is we, we did very much look at the language around the CCI program review. Again, we heard a lot of comments about making sure that if, if regulated entities can use this as an option to comply and they're not going to be reducing emissions on-site, then we have to make sure that the CCI credits do represent one ton of emissions reduction. So we have specifically kind of put language into the CCI program review that says that we do need to evaluate whether we are achieving that one ton per CCI credit on average across all the CCI credits that are going to be awarded under the program. And I think we also added some additional language that we do need to make sure that we report back to you all as the Commission on the overall performance of the CCI program and any recommendations we might have for making improvements in the future. So I'm just going to move to the next slide. I just wanted to point out here, we, we did make some, you know, some minor changes to the, the purposes of the Community Climate Investment. And I'm sure we'll continue to hear a lot of this in public comment. And one of those, one of those changes was to clarify that we do need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions on average, at least that one metric ton per CCI credit. We also emphasized in the, the purposes, in addition to all the previous language about environmental justice and making sure that we focus these investments in environmental justice communities, we did also add an additional bullet, which kind of stressed that the importance of the CCI program should be accelerating the transition from fossil fuels to lower carbon energy sources. So I think that's the last slide I have on updates. You know, as, as Colin said, we are going to have our, our public hearing soon. I could not in any way, shape or form do justice to 4,600 comments. But here's, I just, we did want to highlight some of the comments that we've been hearing in, in our initial review of what's been coming in. I, I do think we've heard consistently that we need to continue to support that CCIs provide benefits and reduce costs for our BIPOC and our low-income communities and also our environmental justice communities. Again, if, if we are going to be allowing this as a compliance option, this needs to be a focus of CCIs. And, you know, we need to continue to look at ways to strengthen that, both in terms of maybe how the rule is drafted, but also thinking forward on the implementation of CCIs in the future. On the best available emissions reductions, we have received a lot of comments that, you know, the approach for the best available emissions reduction is that we assess facilities. We try to identify strategies and investments that they could make to reduce emissions, but there is no mandatory, you know, targets, there are no mandatory reductions under the best available emissions reduction approach. So we have received comments that we do need to find a way to kind of establish mandatory targets or potentially to put those sources under the cap. We've also received a lot of comments that, you know, the best available emissions reduction approach can be overly burdensome for some of our regulated sources. And really that there is a lack of available reduction options for some of these industrial process emissions. You know, there's just less options for reducing greenhouse gas emissions from, you know, semiconductor manufacturing or cement manufacturing, et cetera. We have a whole bunch of, of comments again that are coming in on the CCIs. We could spend a lot of time talking about CCIs, but one thing that we have heard a lot about is, you know, as I just said, we really targeted the CCI program to be focused on the transition off of fossil fuels. But we have heard that there's a lot of interest in also including projects that sequester emissions. So not just products that reduce emissions from fossil fuels, but that also sequester emissions. You know, I think the, the Commission has heard from the staff, we understand the importance of that. But again, when we're looking at this program, we're trying to use all the tools in the toolbox to address fossil fuel emissions. We do know that's a huge challenge for the state. We know for a lot of our environmental justice communities and our rural communities, there's just not a lot of options besides fossil fuel use, so we have to be really focused. There's just not a lot of options besides fossil fuel use. So we have to be really focused on trying to make sure that we can deploy this in a way that. We can mitigate, you know, potential price increases for consumers on fossil fuels and make sure that there's options for them in the future. So. But but we have been receiving a lot of comments about that. I do think we've we've talked about this in the past, you know, the the current, the rule does not regulate natural gas power plants. We do have that passage of H B twenty twenty-one from the legislature, which is a huge boon for obviously climate change in the state. It's a great compliment to the climate protection program. Because obviously, if we're thinking about reducing greenhouse gas emissions and one of the tools might be further electrification, we do need that generation to be as clean as possible. But we continue to hear concerns that, you know, there are some gaps in H B twenty twenty-one. And that, you know, we do need as a state to continue to look at, you know, all the emissions that are associated with the use and the generation of power in the state. I do also want to flag, we are hearing a lot of comments that are just concerned about compliance pathways for our fossil fuel suppliers, you know, concerned that there's just not that many options for them. And that this could potentially lead to really, you know, price increases for small businesses and farmers as consumers of those fossil fuels. So again. These folks are not being directly regulated through the program, but you know, if there are costs that the regulated entities are having to bear and they're passing that on, there's these indirect impacts on some of these businesses. And lastly, I'll just flag, we have received a lot of comments that, you know, basically we should be more aggressive in the emissions reductions. You know, as the rule is drafted right now, it's based off of, you know, these science-based targets, which are about, you know, forty-five percent by twenty thirty-five and eighty percent by twenty fifty. We have received a lot of comments that that should be a minimum and that the state should be doing even more in terms of emissions reductions. But I also want to point out that we've also received comments about the fact that, you know, we use a more recent baseline in the proposed rule. We have used the GHG reporting data. Which the state has been collecting since twenty ten. We heard from a lot of stakeholders that everyone understands why we're using the reported data. It's more granular. It's more specific. And again, you know, Oregon. Is one of the very, very few states that has this amazing record of tracking GHG emissions. But people have also flagged to us that, you know, that means that the starting point could be lower than nineteen ninety. We can't say for sure what nineteen ninety would look like. We just don't have that information, but we do recognize that, you know. If you use some kinds of dummy assumptions for figuring out what nineteen ninety looks like, it's probably true that nineteen ninety would be a little bit lower. And so, you know, we've just kind of flagged here that we do recognize that there could be. You know, somewhere between a two or two point five million difference from using twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen average emissions to start the twenty twenty-two cap versus using nineteen ninety. So. Again, we have a lot more comments than that, but that just wanted to give the commission a flavor of some of the comments we'll be hearing and I'm happy to turn it over, Colin, to see if you've had anything you want to add.
Thank you, Nicole. No, I do not. I know we are very pressed for time and we have a big public hearing ahead of us shortly, so I think we should hand it back to Chair George.
All right. Thanks very much for that introduction. And also it's good to hear as we head into this hearing. That there is going to be additional time for people to prepare comments because we know that not everybody's. Going to probably be able to communicate with us today at this hearing. Stephanie.
Thank you, Chair George. This is Stephanie Caldera, your EQC assistant. For the hearing this evening, we have established a separate link. So anyone, including commissioners and the staff. Who will be attending the climate protection program rulemaking hearing this evening. Will need to log off this meeting when it ends momentarily at your discretion, Chair George. And then please use the Thursday evening hearing link as posted on the EQC website. It is a different link and it is a different call-in number. We will open that room shortly. Chair George, once you are able to recess today's regular meeting.
Thank you very much for that and for directing people to where they can find that address. So. Yes, unless I hear or see any immediate need for comment from our director or our commissioners. And I'm not seeing any waving hands. We will go ahead at four oh one in just a moment. And recess this meeting and then for those who wish to participate in the climate protection program hearing, we will reconvene using the. Zoom address specifically for that that can be found on the EQC website. We are going to go ahead and take a fifteen-minute break because, you know, we're going into a long evening session. So it is just after four now. Let's meet back in this other Zoom room for the climate protection program hearing at four fifteen. Thank you, everyone. And with that, we will go into recess for our regular meeting.